All right, I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Urbana City Council. It's Monday, July 13th, 2020. Before we begin, I want to note that due to Governor Pritzker and the mayoral emergency COVID-19 orders, the Urbana City Council chambers are closed to the public during this meeting. Council members will meet remotely using Zoom webinar. Public may watch the meeting on streaming services, on Urbana Public Television, or attend via Zoom. Per the governor's Phase Four orders, there has to be one member of the body present in the council chambers, and that's myself tonight, and all votes will be taken via roll call vote. So I will call to order this meeting, and will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Colebrook?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here. We have a quorum. Next item is approval of minutes from the previous meeting. That would be a special meeting on June 15th and a public hearing on June 22nd.
Move approval of those minutes.
I'll second.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Marielleis. Are there any corrections? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Next up is additions to the agenda. I do have one item to add, and that's the appointment of two division chiefs in the Urbana Fire Department. And I would also like to ask the council if we could move the mayoral appointments, including these two appointments, up to follow public input. We do have, I believe, the two division chiefs and fire chief attending tonight. So I would like a motion to add the appointments of the division chief and to move the appointments up to follow public input before our presentations.
Okay, I'll make that motion for you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Second.
Who was the second, please?
Jared.
Jared, moved by Dennis, seconded by Jared. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Next item is public input. We will take video input first. If you can, please raise your hand. I'll start with, I see Ron Kester.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. My name is Ron Kester. I live at 1209 West Oregon Street in Urbana. Three months ago, Aleah Lewis was assaulted by members of the Urbana Police Department. As with previous instances of police violence, a series of familiar scripts followed to shape the story, starting with the press release by the UPD that misstated the facts, a News Gazette article that misstated the facts, and a city council discussion narrated by the chief of police. Had Ms. Lewis been permitted to offer her own statement about events that took place that day, she might have noted that the assault by the Urbana Police Department was only one part of the story. Imagine being in proximity to gun violence. That is part of the story. Imagine watching your romantic partner disappear inside of a police cruiser and destined for jail. Imagine multiple assault rifles pointed at you by those with the legal authority to end your life at any moment. That's what happened before the assault by the Urbana Police Department. Imagine trying to engage the officers on the scene with questions and requesting a female officer be present, all to no avail. The Urbana Police Department preferred violent confrontation to any alternative. With multiple bruises, multiple broken ribs, and a possible concussion, Ms. Lewis was then taken to jail, where she did not receive medical attention, where she was stripped naked and placed in isolation, and where she was tased twice by jail staff, causing new injuries and exacerbating trauma. When she was visited by a police officer for the sole purpose of generating video evidence that would be used against her, then she appeared before an arraignment court judge who set a bail amount she was all but impossible for her to pay. Jail is an inherently violent place. Even if you do nothing wrong, even if you mind your own business, you will still be a victim of that violence. In Ms. Lewis's case, due to incarceration, she lost her employment. Due to incarceration, she lost her apartment, with no idea where her personal possessions might be. Due to incarceration, she had almost no contact with family and friends when she needed them the most. Even after she was released, the criminal justice system had already made life virtually unlivable for Aleah Lewis. And what if the police on the scene had practiced de-escalation techniques? What if the police on the scene recognized the symptoms of someone in a state of profound trauma and sensibly requested ambulatory care? Instead, the Urbana Police Department knowingly and deliberately turned Ms. Lewis into another case for the criminal justice system by assaulting her, then shaping the facts to justify their actions. This is what a racist police department looks like. Three months have passed, and we are still living with this crisis condition. This is why we need to defund the police.
Yes, I'm Creel Unbeloved. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, and you have three minutes to speak.
Thank you. I'm here in support of the Champaign County Anti-Racist Coalition to get the charges dropped against Aleah Lewis. I saw the videos of the arrest. I saw the council meeting where Chief Saravin presented video of Ms. Lewis without her permission or a lawyer present. Her charges are unacceptable. Every concerned citizen and member of your council need to demand that Julia Reitz drop these charges. Again, that's 217-384-3733. On May 31st and June 1st of this year, 22 black protesters were charged with felonies for protesting violence against blacks. Their bombs were set incredibly high. That was a racist act. You have the power to fix this. Call Julia Reitz at 384-3733. I beg that you use your power to invest in black communities, especially in the black youth. Don't let these protesters go forward with felonies on their records and no hope for their future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
I'm Tracy Chong, resident of Urbana. Let me start tonight by asking a question. Why do you think members of the public file FOIA requests? Do you think the hours spent writing and appealing requests, organizing and examining documents is just a fun hobby to create burden on city staff? No, I would much rather spend my time on many, many other things. The public, myself included, file FOIA requests when we suspect that something is not right. If the number of FOIA requests Urbana receives is increasing each year, one question to ask is why? I assure you, it is not because residents have decided that this is the new fun thing to do. In the past few months, city staff and Urbana Police Department, with the blessings of Mayor Marlin, have started charging hundreds of dollars to get records. Why? The only reason I can think of is that they do not want the information out to the public to scrutinize. From recent documents obtained through FOIA requests, it was uncovered that Mayor Marlin has not been honest with the public. For example, during city council meeting on March 23rd, Mayor Marlin said audience participation could not be received via Zoom due to technical difficulties. City staff refused to clarify what the technical problem was. It was only uncovered through FOIA requests that Mayor Marlin had emailed staff days earlier, saying she did not want the public to be able to give input via Zoom. This was never reflected in agenda or audience participation instructions despite being premeditated days earlier. In the Aleah Lewis case, Mayor Marlin claimed that a bullet went over the heads of bystanders to support the police narrative and justification of the level of force used against Ms. Lewis. Up to today, there has been no records produced that support her claim. FOIA requests are crucial for uncovering police misconduct. Through body camera footage, there's evidence of a UPD officer conducting an illegal mailbox search of an Urbana resident. There's evidence of Officer James Corykakis saying he was going to someone's place of work to see what the F they are doing, and there are also examples of officers violating body camera policy. Up to today, the full body camera footage from officers involved in the Aleah Lewis incident has not been released. Again, why is it important to obtain such records? The few minutes of body camera footage selected to be shown by UPD does not show the whole story. There's usually information to be gained from the officers' interactions with each other before and after the arrest. It is clear why some people are trying hard to prevent information from getting into the hands of the public. The scary thing is this tactic of creating a huge monetary hurdle is working. My hands are tied at the moment, and I don't see any way to get the documents I requested. These documents are related to Police Department, the Aleah Lewis incident, the CPRB, and the city's compliance with the Open Meetings Act. Concerned members of the public are using their time and resources to work towards a cleaner, more honest, and transparent government. City council members, as representatives of the people, whose side are you on and what are you going to do about it? Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Philippe Menanto.
Hi, everyone. I'm not Philippe, but I'm happy to speak, but I think he should go first.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Perfect. Good evening, members of the city council. My name is Philippe Menanto, and I'm a resident of Urbana. It was actually not long ago, it was during the November and December meetings of the Urbana City Council that many of us came here and to the Urbana School Board meetings to express our deep concerns with the proposal of putting armed police in the Urbana schools. Tonight, I feel compelled to remind this body and other members of our community of the discussion that happened only short eight months ago, and how the city council and the Urbana School Board decided that it was in the best interest of a community, particularly the black and Latinx community, to spend more than $300,000 to have armed police in our schools and to pay for their guns, cars, and gas masks. I am thankful that at the time the city council enabled the healthy discussion that the school process, and that this council took the time to study the proposal. The discussion resulted in welcome amendments that put some safeguards for the students and a review protocol for the contract with the police, but at the end, this only resulted in a slightly less revolting agreement. I want to thank, however, the single member of this board, Jared Miller, who opposed this contract and who didn't think that this was in the best interest of our community. In case this hasn't been already emphasized enough, I would like to remind you that there's a body of research showing that increased police presence does not result in safer schools, and that increased police presence, in fact, is correlated with increased juvenile incarceration. Moreover, we know that social workers, counseling staff, and trauma-informed practices will go much farther to root out the systemic issues that are actually driving the violence we sometimes see in schools. We can all agree that a lot has happened since last December. The side gates of the country has changed. We've seen thousands alone and in families come out to protest racial injustice and support the Black Lives Matter movement here in Urbana and also in Champaign during COVID-19. But we're also being disappointed by the arrests and the beating of Aleah Lewis at the hands of the Urbana Police. I wonder, what kind of message are we sending to the black community when we still have a street named Plantation Point here in Urbana, where no other than the president of the school board actually lives? How much longer do we need to wait for change to happen? While the country seems to be finally beawakened to the reality of racial injustice, and we hear loud calls to defund police departments, a progressive time like Urbana seems to be heading in the opposite direction. It looks like it wants to stay on the wrong side of history. I believe that all of us have a mission to avoid this. So I'd like to urge the city council to move in the right direction and cancel the intergovernmental agreement between the school district and the city of Urbana, and use these resources in the benefit of our community instead. Thank you very much.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you. You have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Amina Payne. The primary purpose of my statement is to seek support in obtaining accountability and transparency of our local school board. Urbana Board of Education passed a one-page resolution on commitment to racial equity on November 20th of 2018. Yet, when considering the addition of SROs, or rather, paying for SROs, very little work was done to evaluate how this armed officer presence affects students of color. I'm also calling for the release of data publicly on the effectiveness of this 2018 resolution, particularly as it relates to the results of the board's March 2018 equity audit. The audit targeted a handful of positions mostly held by people of color. If Urbana's past, present, and emerging leaders are looking to empower and not exploit a community, ask yourselves, did the Board of Education conduct formal, in-person interviews to guide their decisions on paying for SROs? Or did they capture anecdotal stories to support their own perspectives? Did they offer district-wide methods for garnering anonymous feedback from multiple stakeholders? What measures did the district take to increase survey participation from students? When will these surveys take place again? Is the data public? Why not? Couldn't other community members be employed by the district for a far less cost to provide capable guardianship that would reduce criminal incidents on school property? Is the school district going to be reimbursed some of the money they paid for SROs while school was out of session because of COVID? In the intergovernmental contract, there is a budget for SRO professional development. I have confirmed via Freedom of Information Act that former and current SROs have completed no training specific to children, disabilities, languages, or cultures as it relates to the academic environment. The SRO performance evaluation states the superintendent shall collect feedback regarding the SRO's individual performance and shall provide such feedback to the UPD on an annual basis, not the public, not the students, the police department. There's also a formal program evaluation, and the first one is to take place two years after the effective date of the contract. It's easy to step back and point fingers, but that doesn't allow us to achieve our goals. We continue to need strong leadership at every level that is willing to lean in even when it's uncomfortable and embrace that discomfort to help cultivate a better future for our most precious resource, the students of Urbana. Thank you for hearing me out, and I appreciate the good work that you are striving to do.
Thank you. Ben Jocelyn?
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Oh, wonderful. So I want to talk about a couple of things. It's already been mentioned that we've failed to address, as a city, the charges against Aleah Lewis. We failed to address the charges against all the people who were arrested on May 31st. We continue to disregard public input that is overwhelmingly against the budget that was put forward. That budget process was just a joke. The fact that we only had one time when we were allowed to give public input, that it was cut short, every single comment, every single comment was negative and demanded changes. The only change that was begun, or two changes began to be addressed, one was the fact that we don't need another K-9 car. That car costing $60,000 for 10 to 15 searches a year means you're looking at spending $5,000 just for a car for the surge to try and pin extra charges on folks. And that was just pushed off for a year. The other one was reducing the police by 120,000 and claiming somehow that that makes it so you can't hire some other officer. The process was just a joke. The city priorities are so far misaligned with the values of these people in this town that you're going to continue to get this feedback until you take real action. The citizen review board was never designed to be a functional check. They're a volunteer rotating board that is appointed by the mayor, that we're giving now, we're discussing their training like that's what's going to change it, but they have no teeth. That board was never designed to be functional, and until you listen to our demands to defund the police, reform that has been tried again and again through decades of race riots, this is not a new problem. This is not something that we've seen before. There was Ferguson, so then there was body cameras. Now we've got the same level of police violence and going and pretending that somehow changing the amount of training that volunteers who go on police ride-alongs, ride-alongs just being propaganda. If you want an actual view of how the police are going, or what their job is and how they're performing it, you look at body cam footage of randomized footage. Ride-alongs are when you can send your friendliest cop to make a friend with somebody and pretend that the police department's somehow doing better than they are, and they're not going to see an honest view of the police department. So actually having access to body cam footage would be a reasonable thing to have if reform was ever going to work. But the fact that we had to fight for that for years, fought for this civilian review board for years, and still we are stifled at every level, and when you look at footage of people beating, getting beat up by police officers on tape, you still decide it's important to charge them with four felonies and throw their life away. It is a fundamental disregard of human life and an abdication of your duties to take care of the people of this area. It's disgusting, and I'm sick and tired of having to show up and tell you every single week you have to do better. So think about your priorities. We've got $75,000 for personnel for sustainability and $11 million for police officers. My life is likely going to end because of climate-related catastrophe, whether it be civil or foreign news.
Mr. Jocelyn, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Alana.
Hi, can you hear me?
Can you speak a little louder, Alana?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, that's better.
Hi, my name is Alana Ackerman. City council members and community members, what have you done with your power this week to get the charges dropped against Ms. Aleah Lewis? We say it week after week. This is not a rhetorical question. We want an answer, and we want action. I call on everyone listening today, city council members and community members, to call Julia Reitz and demand that the charges are dropped. I spoke with her administrative assistant, who welcomed daily phone calls. She told me she welcomed daily phone calls in order for all of us to demand that the charges are dropped. The phone number, please get out your pens, everybody, is 217-384-3733. On May 31st and June 1st of this year, 27 people, 22 of whom are black, were arrested and charged with felonies for protesting against anti-black violence. And they were assigned bond between $10,000 and $50,000. This treatment is racist and must be rectified. What have you done with your power this week to get all 27 charges dropped? We all have the power to call Julia Reitz at 217-384-3733 on a daily basis to demand that all these charges are dropped. City council members, what have you done with your power this week to invest in black communities, especially in black youth? This is not a rhetorical question. I want an answer and action.
Hello, is this coming through clearly?
Can you speak up a little bit?
Yeah, is this any better?
That's better.
All right. So looking at the agenda for today, there are just a couple of things I wanted to mention. So I saw the proposed, let's see, what's it called? The resolution for the training of the CPRB members, and it looks like, you know, that's a good start. One thing I want to urge the city council members to do today is just to make sure you get very clear, what's the plan to get the boarding compliance for right now? Because as of right now, none of them are in compliance with this training, so does that mean until everybody completes the training and the ride-alongs that they're unable to do things? I just, I couldn't quite tell clearly from the agenda or from the memorandum, so if you all could get that clear, that'd be probably very helpful for the CPRB members as well. The second thing is, I wanted to urge that the training materials that are listed in this document, so basically there's different sessions for orientation and for technical training, I wanted to urge the council to make sure that these things become publicly available. I mean, so first of all, you know, at some point, these things are going to have to be turned into things like PowerPoints or whatever, so that, you know, the CPRB members can actually be trained on them. It'd be pretty easy just to post those on the CPRB page. What would be a step, you know, even better would be if these can be made as some sort of training, like, you know, video-recorded lecture or something, because for one thing, that would help you guys later, because you can just reuse those for new CPRB members. And for second, it'd be really helpful for people who are, you know, paying attention, who might want to become CPRB members later, or even just the general public, to know what's going on, and basically what are these policies for the police and everything. So I would urge you guys to see if it's possible to make that available. And then the last comment I had was about the FOIA. So it was helpful to see the memorandum from the city attorney about the FOIA charges and what's legally allowed. Some things on that are a little bit worrying, though, and I hope the city council members can look into this. So basically, one thing I just wanted to point out is, so in that memorandum that's attached to the agenda for today, it mentions that the city is allowed to charge certain prices for electronic data, and there's separate charges for PDF or non-PDF. So just to put this in the context, for the non-PDF data, it says the city is allowed to charge $20 for up to, including two megabytes of data, $40 for two megabytes to four megabytes, and $100 for more than four. And so I was just trying to figure out, what does that actually mean in terms of something like body cam footage? And so just for reference, you know, for just like a 480p YouTube video, three minutes is 13.2 megabytes, which means just to get access to, you know, three minutes of body cam footage would already cost somebody $100 via FOIA. And so I want to urge you guys to say, okay, well, you know, the legal limit or the legal rules are definitely what's listed here. I'm not disputing that. But the city council has the power to say, okay, well, we actually want to make it so this, you know, this FOIA process is useful to citizens, so we're going to set different rules, you know, and say, okay, the city is required to provide, you know, X amount of body camera footage for whatever cost. So I urge you guys to go beyond, you know, sort of what the state legal limit is, and, you know, set your own rules for this, because it seems like, you know, this basically means, okay. Because it seems like, you know, this basically means, okay, if I'm arrested and I need to see the footage, I need to pay at least $100. And for many people, that's going to be prohibitive. Okay, thanks for listening.
We will be clarifying the CPRB training protocols during the presentation, and actually, they have been video-recorded already. So, so we're, we're ahead of you on that one. And we'll clarify FOIA as well. Julie Watkins.
I'm unmuted, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Julie Watkins, I live in Urbana. I want to thank all the other speakers who have been speaking. I noticed on the website that last meeting was canceled due to lack of agenda items. I think you had plenty of items from all this comment you haven't discussed in council. Someone in the last meeting before the skipped meeting implied the Urbana police problem, that he didn't think the police problem was as bad as a few loud voices have been saying it was in these public inputs. Well, what's loud? People throwing, police throwing people to the ground without good reason, what's loud? Lots of people asking the same question and no answer. I think it's loud for saying obviously upside-down things such as something isn't violent that looks violent and expecting us to accept that. That's like saying round is square. It doesn't make sense. I would like you to please apologize to Aliyah Lewis for the videos at the meeting that didn't allow her to present her side. And I would like you, the council, to make a statement asking for charges for her to be dropped, also for the 26 protesters. Thank you, I hope you're listening this time.
Aiden Watson Morris.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, all right. I quickly wanted to speak in agreement with that last comment, I think, at the meeting in which it was said that there were many quiet voices in support of police in the community if we believe that government is about transparency. I think those voices, if they want to be heard, should be here. What I'm hearing at these meetings is again and again, community members calling for the city council to drop the charges against Aliyah Lewis, to call Julia Reitz at 217-384-3733 and demand that those charges be dropped, as well as dropping the charges against the 27 protesters. As has been pointed out, 22 of those protesters were black, and they're arrested and charged with felonies for the simple act of protesting against anti-black violence. These protesters were assigned excessively high bond, and it is absolutely and unequivocally racist that they are still in the position that they are, as is especially the case for Ms. Aliyah Lewis, who was assaulted by the Urbana police. And no amount of police training that attempts to desensitize members of the citizen police review board to what is unequivocally a fact of violence, an act of violence, is going to change that. And so in order to rectify that, I think it's important that city council members and community members call Julia Reitz at 217-384-3733 and demand that the charges are dropped, both that the charges are dropped against Aliyah Lewis and that the charges are dropped against the 27 protesters. The Champaign County Anti-Racist Coalition, the CU Action Coalition, and many other organizations in this community have been doing work that does not come from a minority of voices, but voices that haven't been represented in this space and are working very, very hard to see their work represented and to be heard. That involves things like divesting from school resource officers, which Urbana does not seem to be doing any work toward despite what the community very, very actively requested at the budget hearing. So again, I wanted to echo an earlier comment and asking city council members what they have done with their power this week to work toward investing in black communities and black youth who are affected by these decisions. City council, as was pointed out in an earlier meeting, does not reflect the racial makeup of the Urbana area, and I think it's important that if you are going to hold this power, you think and be conscious and reflective about what the people in this community are loudly asking of you. If that seems loud or to represent a minority perspective, that may have more to do with where one is standing and what one is listening to than the actual facts of the community and which one is involved. Thank you.
Megan McDonald.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
All righty. Dear Mayor Marlin and the rest of the city council, my name is Megan McDonald, I'm from Ward 5, long time no see. I could say that the cancellation of last week's meeting came as a shock, but it seems pretty in line with the rest of your act of suppression of the public's voice and demands. The listed reason for cancellation was lack of agenda items. Is that a joke? Have you been listening to public comment for the last three months? There's still plenty amiss in our community that still needs to be addressed, from defunding the police, addressing where to reallocate those funds, getting SROs out of schools. How about acknowledging that Unit 4 schools declared racism a public health crisis? You all spend plenty of time talking about COVID-19's effects on the community, yet crickets when racism is on the same table for discussion on its effects on public health. Your privilege allows you to sit back and act like you don't know, or actually, maybe you don't know what's going on to black and brown folk in this town. To not care, to respond, to pick and choose, highlight what you want to. You could be using your privilege and influence to put pressure on Julia Reitz to drop the charges for Aliyah Lewis and the 27 protesters from May 31st. We're not going to wait until September for you to bring up budget amendments, only cutting 2% was an insult. Millions of dollars go to the police department, yet we have no public art museum in Urbana, busted sidewalks and streetlights that you, you know, on so many streets, no theaters. You're sitting, you're literally sitting there in positions that could actually do something about this, and yet, Mayor Marlin, you push back on every step of progress because you are cop-endorsed, because you are scared of what will happen when you admit you're on the wrong side of history. How dare you reply so promptly to citizen complaints about removing the thin blue line flags? You took less than 24 hours to respond to complaints about train humming heard in East Urbana. Is this where your priorities lie? You post articles about Juneteenth and how violence is splitting up families. What exactly do you think you're doing by allowing the police to consistently berate and terrorize the black community with immunity? What do you think you're doing by overfunding them to arrest and overcharge black folks in this community, but let white folks go with a slap on the wrist for a hate crime? What, what do you think you're doing when you let the Urbana police kill Richie Turner and consistently criminalize other black folks without a home? The avenues you provide for public dialogue don't work, and that's seemingly what you want. We've been showing up consistently to these meetings with ideas and concerns and complaints, every week getting more agitated that you are not listening. We flood your office lines, we show up to the special city council meeting with nothing but the opportunity for you all to take up too much time on your soapboxes, and again, no results. The CPRB is useless, stop wasting our time with it. So rest assured, we will not give up, we will continuously show up, we will let the town, the county, the state know where the local government in Urbana stands and how pseudo-compassionate it is, allowing lives to be ruined and tossed away. You think all those young people deserve felonies? You believe they and everyone affected by police violence like them deserve to sit a year or more in jail? Sit in a place that's meant to break them in 30 days, a place that hardly rehabilitates people. I suggest you use your power wisely, drop the charges, defund the police. Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Diane, are there more than 20 people speaking tonight?
Yes.
Okay, I will try to speak quickly then.
You have three minutes.
I hear you. I just want to remind the council that Urbana is not transparent and Urbana is terrible in regards to public records, particularly police records. And Urbana is also far worse than our neighbors in that regard, referring to UIC, the City of Champaign, and the Champaign County. They're just flat-out secretive when it comes to police records. And I want to make clear that you are already violating the Ten Shred Principles which you just passed. The Ten Shred Principles lists transparency two separate times in its list of tenets. And when you rack up hundreds of dollars in fees for someone just requesting, you know, some videos of a police encounter, that is not being transparent. And you were previously already terrible about transparency, but you've become much worse in this regard. And, you know, passing the Ten Shred Principles is just flowery language that your staff is pretty much ignoring right now. On June 25th, Marlin claimed that, you know, these huge fees are only being charged to recurrent requesters. That's not true. I'm aware of multiple people who are being charged fees for records and, and they've only submitted, one person I think was on their first request and another person was on their, like, third or fourth request. You're charging it to anyone apparently who was asking for police records. Speaking of recurrent requesters, your staff are utterly corrupt in the way that you tally up the number of FOIA requests someone has submitted. I have an instance where the city has tallied up seven different FOIA numbers for one request just because I was trying to get compliance to the initial request. And I want to remind everyone that members of the public still cannot obtain records related to the Aliyah Lewis arrest, the city is blocking that. And the only reason the public was able to confront that, that episode of misconduct is because a private individual created their own video of the incident. And city staff continue to violate public records laws. I recently tried to acquire police body camera video in which I personally appear, and the city refused to give it to me. And in regards to Mr. Patel's comments about the digital file fees, what the city is doing is actually racking up multiple instances of the $100 maximum fee upon a single request, and that's how they're charging like $800 for one FOIA request. And it's easy to understand why the city and particularly the Urbana Police Department want to be secretive, and it's because these records are riddled with examples of misconduct and corruption. On June 25th, Mayor Marlin talked about the extensive resources required to fill public records requests, and this is just a classic Marlin twist of reality. Fulfilling public records request is actually fairly easy and straightforward. It is the denial of records and the heavy redaction of any information which might reveal misconduct, that, that's what is resource-intensive. I also want to repeat Mr. Patel's comments about the CPRB training requirements. I want to see all of that publicly available, and I think we've heard about that a little bit. And last, I want to point out that at the recent CPRB meeting, Carol Mitten seemed to invent a new requirement, which is a requirement of physical presence on the new complaint form she invented. That is not listed in the CPRB ordinance, and we need to stop having city staff invent requirements for police complaints. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Nixon.
Hello, I'm unmuted, are you able to hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, this is just a very quick comment. My name is Sarah Nixon, I'm a resident of the City of Urbana. Couple of comments, but really quickly, this is not a prepared statement, so bear with me. First, I have learned through my church that Mayor Marlin has stated, apparently off-record to a church official, that she disagrees with the Urbana Police Department's decision to arrest Aliyah Lewis, and she opposes that arrest. And having learned this, I find this encouraging, but I would like to, again...
Sarah Nixon, I'm going to interrupt here, and that is not true. I never stated that.
Oh, I see. Then the person who stated that to me is wrong. They did state it assertively and unequivocally, so evidently they are wrong. And that saddens me. I'm going to move on to my second point then, and that point relates to FOIA Freedom of Information Act requests made to the city. So I would like to provide my own perspective on one point. I have requested Urbana Police Department police records, and I have never been charged fees. So I just wanted to mention that. But that said, we are aware that fees are being charged to other requesters, and these fees appear to be capricious, they appear to be exorbitant, and they do appear to be targeting certain individuals and labeling those individuals as repeat requesters, or I don't know the exact term that is used, something along the lines of, you know, an excessive requester. And I want to underscore the point that when we have individuals in this community who take it upon themselves to confront police misconduct, and as part of that endeavor, who take it upon themselves to submit requests for public records under the Freedom of Information Act, these individuals should not be targeted, they should not be singled out and, and sort of ridiculed as vexatious or frivolous requesters, and should not be penalized by the imposition of fees that are entirely, you know, at the discretion of the city to impose. I think the entire community is deeply grateful to those squeaky wheels, those voices that have been filing these FOIAs. Thank you.
Thank you. The last speaker is B. Dunn, can you please state your name for the record?
Sorry, I just took a mouthful of M&Ms. My name's Brian Dunn, I live in Champaign, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
So, sorry, I'm gonna chew a second. So I've been taking this class through CU Trauma Resilience Initiative. The last session that we had, we had a conversation with Marlin Mitchell, who does a lot of work with first followers and is a local PhD student. There was a great conversation about the possibility of restorative justice for the people who are facing felony charges for the protests on May 31st. You know, if you're uncomfortable asking Julia Reitz to do something along the lines of dropping the charges, maybe ask her to alter the charges to something along the lines of the people involved addressing the harm that they supposedly caused, instead of just harming those people. It's something that Julia Reitz has done before for minor crimes. Someone who was a part of the class talked about how Julia Reitz, someone who was a part of the class had $10 stolen from her wallet. The person who stole the $10 was found and arrested, and Julia Reitz collaborated with the victim of the crime to put in a kind of framework of restorative justice instead of charging that person with a crime. I think this would be very beneficial for our community. I think that it is a constructive thing. I think that, you know, charging people with felonies is by all points detrimental to their lives, detrimental to our community, and you have power and influence to do something about that. So I just urge you to please do something about that, look into restorative justice models, and, you know, if you, yeah, I would definitely recommend all these CU Trauma Resilience Initiative classes as well. They're very informative, and I think that they're kind of on the cutting edge of a new way of thinking about community and addressing harm to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we do have some email input for tonight, and again, I remind the public that emails received between 8:00 AM and 4:00 PM on the day of the meeting will be incorporated into the meeting record. So I have an email from Amy Hatch. "My name is Amy Lou Hatch, I live in Champaign, Illinois, contacting you today to register my objection to the charges against Aliyah Lewis. I firmly request that you do the right thing and demand State Attorney Julia Reitz drop all charges. Emily Curlin, I'm writing as a concerned Urbana citizen urging you to take immediate action in having all charges against Aliyah Lewis dropped. Her treatment during her arrest was unconscionable, the very least we can do is drop charges. The best we can do is issue a formal apology to her and to compensate her for lost wages and legal costs and to support her with mental health counseling for the trauma she has endured at the hands of law enforcement. Karen Linder, you must act in support of all people of color in our community by seeing to it that the charges against Aliyah Lewis are dropped. It's not enough to talk or kneel to show support, you need to take action. It's incredibly disappointing to see the UPD and prosecutor dig in, continuing to press charges against Ms. Lewis. We can and must do better, see to it that all charges against Ms. Lewis are dropped." And there were two longer emails, one from John Hayes, I'm not going to read the entire thing, but it will be incorporated into its entirety into the record. He wants to take action with regard to Aliyah Lewis and the 27 protesters who were wrongfully arrested, pressured Julia Reitz to drop the charges. And then there was an extension, extensive discussion of the use of force, and this will be entered into the record. An email from Gerald Cruz, I believe Jared, you wanted to read this into the record?
Yeah, if I would be allowed, and there was one more hand that went up right at the, and Danielle Chinault raised her hand, I don't know if I want to look at it. I don't know if I want to let her go, and then I'll read Daryl's.
Let's read Daryl's, and then we'll go back to Danielle.
This is from Daryl Cruz, who lives in my ward. "Hello, Mayor and City Council members. I want to publicly share Urbana's recent posted 2019 IDOT traffic and pedestrian stop reports. Because of limited time, I will only mention stop rates. The traffic report stated that black drivers were stopped at a rate three and a half times what one would statistically expect. This number falls within a 95% confidence interval of 3.2 to 3.8. The pedestrian report stated that blacks were stopped at a rate 11 times what one would statistically expect. This number falls within a 95% confidence interval of 6.5 to 19. This rate ranks Urbana second highest in the state among municipalities with a similar or larger minority population. The state has been reporting traffic stop data for 16 years. Whether old census data, new census data, or traffic accident data is used, we know for a fact that racial disparities in traffic stops exist in Urbana. In 2004, African-American drivers composed 35.8% of all stops in 2019, and, or, I'm sorry, in 2004, they composed 35.8% of all stops, and in 2019, 33.5%. We no longer need to debate various methodologies or benchmarks to know a serious problem exists. At this juncture, to do so would be counterproductive and distracting. The failure to reduce this racial disparity after 16 years is an alarm ring loudly. The lack of progress clearly tells us the actions of council has undertaken thus far have had little to no impact on the root cause of these disparities, namely, traffic enforcement practices and tactics. Let's be clear, most people support the UPD, understand the inherent dangers of being an officer on the street, and the complexity of modern policing. But we also know that traditional ways of conducting traffic and pedestrian stops that produce racial disparities are no longer acceptable in today's world. Simply put, decades of racially disparate outcomes are no longer seen by society as fair, equitable, or tolerable. Traditional policing practices and tactics that cause these disparities must end and be replaced with a new approach and awareness that racial equity and public safety can both be improved as a result. More data collection, police bias training, community policing, et cetera, are all excellent examples of good intentions that have simply missed the mark. It is past time for the mayor and city council to refocus their efforts on changing traffic enforcement practices and tactics. Reduced traffic disparities will only result if police practices and tactics change. A good example is the recent UPD policy change to step locations. Change is not as difficult as it seems. If people understand why the change is better for everyone, you do not need to tell the UPD how to police, but you need to communicate and set a new community standard for policing that says current racial disparities in traffic and pedestrian stops are simply unacceptable. Through council resolution, you can outline needed changes such as eliminating pretextual stops unless there is reasonable cause, de-linking traffic enforcement from hotspot policing or calls for service, and asking the UPD to more closely monitor non-step stops, especially the amount of time and geographical locations in which officers conduct stops. If needed, adjustments can then be made that are more balanced by race and neighborhood. These are the types of things the council can and must do if we're serious about reducing Urbana's unacceptable racial disparities. Simply put, old policing practices and tactics must be updated to reflect the historical changes being demanded and occurring today. Thank you for your time and consideration, Daryl Cruz."
And Danielle Chinowith?
Hello, this is Jane McClintock. I'm sitting here with Danielle, and I was wondering, I'd sent in a letter, but I was hoping I could read it to y'all, because I think I sent it a little late. I'll try to be brief, though, because I had written a good bit about suggestions for making a fairer training for the CPRB. But suffice it to say that I would like to echo what others have said about this. And also, the shout-out for the trauma training that we have available in town. We have great resources, and the chief himself suggested that the police department is lacking in this regard. I think we could invest very wisely in that for both our CPRB volunteers and for the police. On the CPRB topic, I would also, I would like to say I commend the city for removing the notary requirement, which is, of course, not part of the CPRB ordinance. But I was really disappointed and, in fact, somewhat outraged to see that the new form that they created includes the language that the person must be, quote, "physically present" in order to submit a complaint. This is another fabrication. It's not in the ordinance, and it is not substantiated by the language of the ordinance. And this is just a way to block complaints based on cellphone or body camera evidence, and is going to undermine the ability of the CPRB to have any kind of effectiveness in oversight of the police. Please fix it. And I'll pass it to Danielle, if I may.
Good evening. You might want to reset the clock. This is Danielle Chinowith. I live at 412 West Illinois Street. I wanted to speak about the CPRB training that's on the agenda for tonight. I reviewed the proposed training, and I want to strongly encourage you to make anti-bias training required. We understand from the research that racial bias is implicit and pervasive. It's essential that anyone serving on the Urbana CPRB be trained in recognizing their own racial and gender biases, as well as racial and gender biases that might be at play in the work that they do. I also want you to really consider what message it would send to the community that you make police ride-alongs, four hours of police ride-alongs mandatory, but you make anti-bias training optional. I think the message is that actually anti-racism doesn't play a role in looking at this piece. So please make the training required. I also want to say that I know that there is work to reform the CPRB. I'm grateful that the council, the mayor are looking at those pieces. I want to comment on the CPRB meeting. The last meeting where I was expecting that we were going to start moving forward, we'd set up, you know, more frequent meetings, the CPRB could get to work. I was under the impression in my conversations that's what would happen. I came to the meeting, virtually, and basically you saw city administration putting the brakes on the process. In fact, the CPRB was not even allowed to vote on when they would meet next. They were told they were not trained. And I feel like it was a real, I would say, an abuse of the understanding of the CPRB ordinance that this board would not be able to even vote on when they're going to meet regularly because somehow their training is considered improper. I would encourage the city council to provide greater oversight and not just leave it to staff to determine what this CPRB reform is going to look like. I think you should provide very clear direction to your staff, who you appoint every year, what you want out of your CPRB, because I am afraid from that precedent that it may not be what you're looking for. I want to just end with two things. One is, I really want to insist that the public forum on the 10 shared principles be open to the public, not invitation-only. And I generally want to say that one of the concerns I have in this era of COVID is the way in which public input has been limited. So, you know, it's great for parents and community members to have greater access to the council, and I think that should be celebrated. And the fact that we're hearing redacted versions of letters, I really would encourage you to read the full amount and not to continue to constrain public input in that way. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. We will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the appointments and reappointments. And the first will be the two Urbana Fire Department Division Chief appointments. And we have with us tonight, I believe, Captain Mike Wallace, soon-to-be Division Chief Mike Wallace, and Captain Clint Weider, along with Fire Chief Chuck Los. So I'm pleased to submit the Urbana Fire Department Division Chief appointments. First would be Urbana Fire Department Captain Mike Wallace. He has been a member of the Urbana Fire Department since 1996, has served in the rank of captain for one year. He also possesses 11 years of volunteer fire service experience with Corn Belt Fire Protection District. Captain Wallace was a state fire academy instructor for four years. He's currently a member of Urbana's Technical Rescue Team. At the time of his recommendation for appointment, he served as co-chair for the department's Apparatus Uniform and Field Training Officer Program Committee. He's also a member of the department's Safety Committee and is a Foreign Fire Tax Board trustee. He was selected as Urbana Fire Department's Fire Officer of the Year for 2019. And for Urbana Fire Department Captain Clint Weider. Clint Weider has been a member of the Urbana Fire Department since 1992, has served in the rank of captain for three years. He possesses 20 years of volunteer fire service experience, having served at Edge Scott Fire Protection District and ending his tenure there as captain. He served for two years at the Peoria Fire Department. He's a former vice president of the IAFF Local 1147. And at the time of his recommendation for appointment, he served on the union's executive board as chief steward. He was selected as Urbana Fire Department's Fire Officer of the Year for 2018. And just for your information, there are a total of three division chiefs in the Urbana Fire Department. So I'm pleased to recommend them for appointment. And I guess, can they be, can they, do they have video, Jason? Just audio? Okay. Is there a motion for approval?
I'll move approval of the appointments, but I'd love to hear from both of our new prospective captains.
Okay. Well, if we get a motion on the floor, then we can have a discussion.
Motion for me.
Okay.
I'd like to second it, then.
Okay. And can we unmute Captain Weider and Captain Wallace?
Captain Weider is unmuted, as is Fire Chief Los, and looks like Captain Wallace is also unmuted now.
Chief Los, would you like to introduce or say anything, and then we'll turn it over to the two individuals?
Okay. Did you hear the first part?
Can you repeat that, please?
You betcha. Thank you so much, Mayor and Council. I appreciate the opportunity to be able to introduce these two candidates for Division Chief. We did a fairly extensive testing process through an assessment center and an interview process. That we had six awesome candidates. The interview committee or board went through the assessment center first, looked at the results, and then went through the interview process and are bringing these two candidates forward as a recommendation. Clint Weider is captain on second shift currently, and Mike Wallace is a captain on first shift currently. So I'm going to introduce, first of all, Mike Wallace and let him have a few words, and then, right after that, Clint Weider, if you would like to have something to say as well.
This is Mike Wallace. Hey, I just want to thank the mayor and the chief and the council members for allowing me to have this opportunity to serve the citizens of Urbana. And it is indeed an honor and a privilege to be chosen out of the, to be one of the, out of the six. I know that you guys had a tough decision. Obviously, a lot of these guys are my friends. I mean, we've all been on the fire department. We're comrades, we're brothers-in-arm, so to speak, and we have a pretty tight relationship. We do currently work well together, and any one of the six would have been a great choice. That is especially an honor and a privilege, like I stated, for, to be chosen for recommendation. And I will do my best to my abilities to serve the citizens of Urbana and bring pride to the Urbana Fire Department. And if anybody has any questions, fire away.
Any questions for Captain Wallace? Jared?
Captain Wallace, could you just tell us a little bit about how long you've been with the department and your history with the city?
Well, I got hired the second day of January in 1996, so a little over 24 years of service with the fire department. Obviously, I started as a firefighter, worked up through the ranks, was an engineer, was a lieutenant since 2011, and progressed to the captain rank, and I've been there since August 1st of last year. So I've served as a captain, and now, you know, the opportunity to serve as a division chief or a chief officer. I am on the Technical Rescue Team. I've been there since the inception of the Tech Rescue Team. It's a standalone team that can respond anywhere to natural disasters or any catastrophes, man-made or not, terrorism events. And that was basically formed after the events of 9/11. Was also part of the Honor Guard, Illinois, Local 1147 Honor Guard. And that was an organization that's actually nationwide, but I'm affiliated with the Illinois Associated Firefighters Honor Guard. And we support families of lost firefighters and attend memorial events and that type of stuff. We do have a presence in a lot of our walkouts for retirees, and I've been involved with that since its inception.
Awesome, thanks.
Thank you.
Captain Weider?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, yeah. I, too, would like to thank you guys for operating the city of Urbana and myself being here. I feel very privileged. I'm an Urbana, born and bred native, and been in the city for all but about a year when I was on Peoria Fire Department. But I actually lived in the city of Urbana while working on Urbana for a while, or working on Peoria. I, too, echo a lot of Mike's thoughts about, you know, feeling honored to have this opportunity and feel excited about being able to fulfill all of that. I can't think of a lot of other things to say, because I've actually been working today, and it's been a very busy day, and I'm still doing stuff, as you guys well understand. Do you have any questions of me? Anybody?
Okay.
This is Chuck Los again. And again, Mayor and Council, I appreciate you taking the opportunity for these two fine officers and will, again, greatly appreciate affirming their appointments.
Chief Los, this would be a good opportunity for some education for all of us, is what does a division chief do in terms of how the department is organized? What's the difference between a captain and a division chief, for example?
Okay, well, the division chief, we jokingly say often that a lot of the things that are swept up into the pile that are undone are taken care of by that division chief. And as we say jokingly, there's a lot of truth to it as well. They are battalion chiefs because they are the leader of their battalion. They are the officers in charge of that battalion. But they also are in charge of individual divisions, whether that division is training, EMS. They also do a lot of committee work. As you heard and saw with their descriptions, they are members of several committees that they are chairs of and lead. So during the day, they're the ones that are carrying out the day-to-day operations with the, again, the committee work stuff, with the leading their battalions, responding to calls. They respond to every regular their battalions, uh, responding to calls, uh, they respond to every, uh, regular alarm that the department gets. So they roll out with all of those. Um, and, uh, again, on top of that, uh, taking care of the day-to-day operations of, uh, of the department. Uh, one of the things that, that I had mentioned when I, I came to Urbana is, um, that they're, that division chief and captain's role, both of them, uh, are very much overloaded. Um, and we're working on, on, uh, taking care of that, uh, again, with the help of, uh, city administration and leadership. Um, and what you all did in passing, uh, the deputy chief's position, uh, will help to, um, unburden a bit so that the, the division chiefs can spend more time with the rank-and-file, uh, help to build a succession plan, uh, help to build a leadership plan. Uh, they are all the, the total package, if you will.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Are there any other questions? Okay, we have a motion on the floor for the appointment of...
I, and I think Jared has a question.
Jared?
I had one, uh, question for Chief Los.
Sure.
Uh, Chief, uh, one of our, uh, city council goals, uh, number two, uh, was about increasing minority, uh, participation in, uh, city procurement and city hiring and contracting. Uh, I was curious about, uh, what is our current racial makeup of the leadership within, uh, the Urbana Fire Department? Uh, if you could comment on, I, I know that's probably not a question you're prepared to answer, but, uh, I'm interested to hear who, who all is up in our leadership there currently, and if we have or have any, uh, minority participation in, uh, the U, the UFD leadership.
Yeah, right now, um, the, uh, the only minority participant right now in our leadership, uh, is our Fire Prevention, uh, Fire Marshal, uh, Phil Edwards. Um, uh, Fire Marshal Edwards will be retiring September 4th, um, so will be, uh, looking to fill some of those duties, not exactly what he's doing right now, but some of those duties, um, with, um, a, uh, a, a part-time inspector at this point. Um, but, um, when Fire Marshal Edwards leaves, um, that, that will be, um, our only minority in the leadership position at this point. Uh, we are working, um, on, uh, strengthening our minority outreach and, um, making that much stronger within our department.
Okay, I, uh, just wanted to set that reminder out there as we, uh, appoint these folks today, that it is a council goal and a, a city goal, and we need to be mindful of that in every appointment that we make.
Absolutely, we, we thoroughly respect that as well.
We will be mindful of that in the search for the deputy chief position as well. Mary Alice, you had a question?
I just wanted to know how many people are in leadership in the, in the, uh, Fire
Right now, we, um, we have myself, the Fire Chief, and we have three division chiefs, um, the Fire Marshal, uh, and that is our leadership at this point. So the 40-hour position, um, is myself and Fire Marshal Edwards, um, and then the division chiefs are 24, 48. So they work a, a, a shift rotation. So they're on 24 hours and off for 48.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Sharice?
Um, Chief Los, could you give me an idea of how many applicants you get, like, you know, for, and I'll, I'll, um, I'll say African-American applicants for jobs with Urbana, for fire, firefighters or otherwise? Do you have any?
Yeah, we, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just said, do you have any idea?
Uh, yeah, I can give you a real rough idea, I can get you better numbers. Um, but we had 79 total applicants, uh, the last time that we, um, put out for hire. Of those 79, not all of them completed the application, um, correctly. So if they didn't complete the application, uh, they didn't get pushed forward. Um, of those, I believe we had 60, um, that, um, were able to set for the exam, the written examination. Uh, we had, um, and again, this is very, very rough numbers. I believe we had, um, one Latino, um, applica, uh, applicant, uh, who is, I believe, number seven on our list right now. Um, and we had, um, seven, um, African-American, uh, applications, maybe eight. Um, and again, I will get you solid numbers on this so that you have exact numbers, and then we had four females.
Okay. Go ahead.
Yeah, we had four females, four females that did apply as well.
Um, another question I wanted to ask is, um, because I realize, like, you know, the difference between hiring, um, with, like, UPD and UFD, I, I guess, I don't know if there's a difference. Um, do the firefighters go through training first and then work to get a hire? Um, I know different fire departments are, uh, you know, throughout the state, probably work differently regarding their, uh, application process. Um, do they get training on the, on the job as they go, or do they, are they, um, required to meet, uh, certain physical, um, uh, uh, standards and, as well as, you know, um, taking written tests and so on and so forth, and that's how they may get an interview, or what is the process there?
Yes, so, so y- yes to all of it. Um, they, um, the, the, the hiring process starts with the application process, and during the application process, they have to, uh, present a, a, uh, a CPAT card. Uh, CPAT stands for Candidate Physical Agility Test, which they have to pass. Um, and again, that's a standard, nationwide standard, uh, that they, that's a, a physical agility test, uh, that, that every candidate has to, to pass. Um, the state of Illinois, um, has got a standard that we use, uh, that we, we generally accept any card, uh, that has been accepted, or that has been, yeah, been accepted by this, this national testing process. That's for the physical side of it. Uh, then we go through the written side. So we've used the National Testing, um, uh, Service. It is an online service that the candidate can take, uh, on their own, and, um, or they can come to where we host it. Uh, we hosted ours last time at Parkland College. Uh, we had probably about 40 or 50 applicants that showed up at Parkland College to take the, uh, written exam last time. Um, once they, they, um, are ranked on a list, and that's state legislation. Uh, it's not something that Urbana says, uh, that they, that we have to do it this way, uh, it is state legislation that as they land on the list, their score, uh, they're, they're placed chronologically on a list. We can hire from the top five or the top 5%, which is the, which, whichever is more. Um, so generally with Urbana, because we don't have that 100-plus list, uh, we can hire from the top five, depending on what our needs are. So if we need a paramedic, uh, we can reach down to number five and, uh, pick up a paramedic off of the list. So once they're called off the list, um, we put them through a background. It's a thorough background, uh, that, that, um, the, each candidate has to go through. Uh, they also go through a psychological. The psychological test, uh, that they go through is about a six-to-seven hour test, uh, that they go through. Um, and again, uh, we go by the national standards of what is acceptable, um, and, and defendable, um, in, in the hiring process. Uh, once they get through the, the, the psychological, we put them through a very, very, very thorough physical exam, uh, to where, uh, they go, they get blood draws, they get x-rays, all of the good stuff, so that, uh, we know, uh, that we're getting a candidate that is going to be in our pension fund, uh, that is, is going to be, um, gonna be here for, hopefully, the next 25 years, uh, under those pension legis, legislation. Um, once we get them hired, uh, if they don't have the Basic Operations Firefighter Certification through the state of Illinois, uh, we will send them through, uh, Illinois Fire Service Institute in Champaign, uh, nice, close to home, right in our backyard, and, uh, they're in that, that, um, academy, uh, for seven to eight weeks. Uh, they get their Basic Operations Firefighter, they get their vehicle, um, uh, operators, uh, FSVO, Fire Vehicle, um, uh, Service Operator. They get, um, their, uh, Instant Command Basic Training, um, and they get all of the basic stuff to bring us, bring them back to us. Um, once they get through all of that, they come back here, if they don't have an EMT. Uh, it takes them about, um, nine to 10 months to get their EMT basic. We're an EMTI department, so we, uh, we have about another six to nine months of training to get to that intermediate level, which is now advanced EMT. Um, once they get, uh, back to us, we also put them through a field training program, which is about six weeks of field training, um, to, to show them what we do here in Urbana.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
You bet.
Uh, Bill?
Yeah, um, on the, on the training, I, when I was in my twenties, I applied and, and did the, uh, um, physical and written tests. I lived in Champaign at the time. The one thing they were doing was, um, to kind of, uh, make you feel more at ease about taking the physical test, they invited you to the, um, to the fire station and kind of showed you what would be expected as far as carrying the dummy and carrying the hoses and things like that. And, uh, I think that helped a lot to kind of participate in that and be more familiar with what, what we were expecting, and that kind of gave you a chance to talk to the, um, fire, firefighters and everything. Um, I got a job and changed my mind before I got any further in the process. It sounds like it got even more, uh, more particular after that, but I wondered if we do something like that that kind of helps encourage people along in the process, because there are a lot of steps where people could drop out.
Yeah, so one of the things that, that we do, uh, Councilman, is, uh, by, again, by, um, requirement, anybody that takes a CPAT, uh, has to be offered at least two practice sessions. Uh, so, uh, when they pay their, whatever it is, uh, up, up to $175 to take this, the candidate physical agility test, with that, they get at least, at least two practice sessions. Uh, we also go through with every candidate, um, the, the importance of, um, having strong legs. Um, we, we, we tell every candidate, uh, three minutes on a, on a stair, a step mill doesn't sound like very long, uh, and most people think that, yeah, you know what, I can do three minutes on a step mill and it won't bother me a bit. But then when we put 75 pounds, a 50-pound vest and two 12-and-a-half-pound, uh, weights on their shoulders, uh, that 75 pounds tends to make that three minutes feel like 30 minutes. So we're very open with them, very, um, uh, honest and upfront, and tell them, um, to, to work out, get in shape before you, you take this physical agility, uh, test. So yeah, we, we really try to, to coach them along.
One more question.
Thank you.
We can take one more question, Sharice.
Chief Los, what is the, um, academic requirement regarding becoming a firefighter?
Right now, the academic requirement is to, uh, have a, be a graduate, high school graduate or GED.
Okay, so...
So what, one of the things that, that we do, and I'll, I'll make this short, um, one of the things that we do, uh, is we try to encourage, um, that our, our candidates, uh, get into, to college to get some education, especially on the EMS side, uh, because that does save the city a tremendous amount of, of, of money. Um, we've been talking, uh, as, as far as getting something into the schools, uh, to get something started, um, to, to get, to give these kids some hope, local kids some hope. So hopefully, we'll get something rolling on that soon.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Clint and Mike.
Well, first you have to vote. Okay. Um, we have a motion on the floor by Jared and a second by Dennis to appoint Captain Mike Wallace and Captain Clint Weider to be division chiefs. Uh, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes, and now congratulations are in order. Thank you.
Good.
Um, two other, uh, sets of appointments. One is to the Police Pension Fund Board for a term ending June 30th, 2023, and that's for Ron Eldridge. Ron Eldridge, as you recall, was the former comptroller for the city of Urbana. And reappointments, both to the Urbana Free Library Board, both for terms ending June 30th, 2023, Barbara Bennett and Jane Williams. Is there a motion for approval?
I'll move for approval. A second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Sharice. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi? Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Oh.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
I'll pass.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Okay, we will move on to a couple of presentations, first from Elizabeth Hannah, just an update on city building reopening.
Yeah, so, um, I can, I can make this fairly quick. So for about a month or a little more, we've, we've had a group that's been working on plans to do, um, reopen on a limited basis so that we can start bringing customers into the building. Unfortunately, um, over the last few weeks, as we've seen, the number of positive COVID cases has been trending up nationally, and that's also been happening within Champaign County. So, um, considering the safety of our employees, um, the recent increases in cases, and the fact that we also have both our police and fire departments primarily housed in the city building, and, um, we're concerned particularly about, um, exposing those critical employees, we've decided to delay that. Um, I did have a lovely presentation, which we'll, um, share at some point in the future as we get, um, closer. Um, for now, um, most of our business is being completed by phone or online. Um, we do, uh, make arrangements to bring customers into the building when that's necessary for them to, um, conduct their business, and we'll frequently have employees, you know, coming to the door to ex, accept papers or whatever from people, but, um, for, for now, um, we're just, we're just gonna kind of continue that practice of, um, admitting people as necessary and requiring them to wear face coverings.
Um, yes, everyone who comes in the building is required to wear a mask. Um, we're, we're making arrangements, you know, August, September is a time of year when a lot of people come to do parking permits. Those can be now done online, so we don't, um, need to have a steady stream of folks coming in just to, to get a parking permit, and we're gonna be pushing out a lot of publicity information about the ability to do that online, and so that will help a lot. And I do want to emphasize, um, you know, you kind of heard it with the township officials discussing it, it's, it's a real challenge to figure out how to keep employees safe, the public safe, get the business done, and dealing with the physical, um, challenges of your building. And Urbana City Building faces the challenge of being the central administrative building, the mi, the only police station and the main fire station where people are essentially living, sleeping, eating and living 24/7. So, um, and we're very, very tight on space. So right now, we have a lot of people working remotely or, um, taking turns coming into the building, and we're still trying to figure out how to configure some offices to where they're, they're safe for people to, well, they're, people aren't sharing them at this point.
they're safe for people to, well, people aren't sharing them at this point. So we're going to err on the side of caution, continue to support the functioning of the city, get the work of the city done, but at this point, it will be by appointment only still for the city building. And we did have a employee test positive last week, so that's another factor. So things change every day in this pandemic, and we're responding to things as they come up, but that's kind of where we are at this point. And for the time being, public city council meetings, board and commission meetings will continue to be remote. I've had a number of board and commission members basically say that if they were required to be at an in-person meeting, they would have to resign their position from the board due to either their own health issues, their caring for family members, concern for other family members, and that sort of thing. And we would have to also reconfigure our city council chambers as well. So there's a lot that we still have to work on. Mary Alice?
So Elizabeth, you had mentioned that cases are percent positivity rate going up in our community. I'm wondering if there is been discussion in terms of what rate that that needs to be at in order for the city building to open it at least partially?
So I wasn't referring to the percent of positive results, because that's been relatively low. I was referring to the number of cases. So we hit a, I think, we hit a kind of a high point probably in April, and then we got lower, and we were fairly, at a fairly low level, I'm going to say like, you know, mid, middle of June, and then we started seeing more positives. So, yeah, I wasn't referring about the percentages, but just the number of positive cases.
Because I believe that the phase four is the positivity in terms of the state of Illinois's kind of rule, so to speak. I'm looking at a chart right now from May until now, and so it starts to climb in May, dips down in June, and there's about two weeks when it up, and now it's decreasing again for the past two weeks, just in terms of the raw date of onset of symptoms.
Yeah, you're probably looking at a different chart, but so we don't have a specific number. The criteria for phase four that you're talking about are the ones that the governor set for the different areas of the state.
So there hasn't been a, I guess I'm just trying to get a handle on what is the point in which we can start the discussion again in terms of reopening the office space?
I'd have to be honest, I'm not sure at this point. I mean, we've made some, you know, physical modifications to try and make the space safer, but I just, I don't feel like at this point we're really there yet.
Okay.
Jared?
I know we had briefly discussed at some point in time, either doing a partial member presence in chambers situation, or something along those lines where we wouldn't necessarily require everyone to be there, but we were doing some folks. We made any progress on resuming meetings in general in chambers?
No, well, that's what I was referring to. We have to, one of the things we have to do is remove the seating in the city council, replace it with chairs that can be spaced appropriately, and it's going to reduce greatly the number of people who can physically be in the room. We're going to be in phase four for a long time if we don't go back to phase three. So that's one of the changes, and we're also looking at changes to the dais as well, on how many people can actually fit in city council chambers. Our chambers are very small. When you start looking at council members, staff, plus a few members of the public in it. So that's one of the things we're still working on. It's, when you actually start to think about it and start to do your measurements and think about how you rotate, you know, if you want members of the public to come in and speak, you know, how do you rotate people in and out and monitor that, and enforce social distancing and all that, it becomes complicated. It's doable, but it's just going to take some more planning. And it's going to take, well, we'll see what the next month or two, month to six weeks brings in terms of when schools reopen, university reopens, and what direction the rest of the counties around us take as well. But again, we are erring on the side of caution just because so much is concentrated in this one building. And people are working, people are working in pretty close quarters, and they would be if they were coming back. So that's where we are with that. The other presentation we have on the docket is the body camera presentation, and this was at the request of city council members, and we have Lieutenant Joel Sanders and Chief Bryant Seraphin.
Hello, I'm going to, real quick here, try and share on the screen so we can see this. So Brian and I want to go through an overview of the system, and there were some, about five questions that were submitted here a couple of weeks ago. Address those as we go through this. So we'll get through the introduction, the overview, and then we'll come back and answer any outstanding questions. To start, let's look at the history of how we got to where we are today. In 2018, late 2018, we purchased three systems from WatchGuard, which is now owned by Motorola, for 200, just shy of $220,000. That got us two camera systems for the interview rooms and investigations. That got us what's called a 4RE, which is the in-car video system for the, all the squad cars, and then the Uvista, which is the body worn camera that the officers wear. In 2019, we actually got the systems fully purchased and installed. We got the interview rooms hardwired in. We got the, all the officers issued a body worn camera, and as the cars came online, through the, we purchased new cars. As they came online, they were, the 4REs were installed into each of the vehicles. So the purpose of the body worn camera, there's many things that we get from them. They help with evidence, they help with transparency, they help with accountability. There's, since the days of Ferguson, communities across the United States have asked for and are now demanding that officers wear the body worn camera system. A little bit of just understanding how we use them. In 2019, we cleared seven citizen complaints using the data, watching the videos that had been captured by the officers, and we submitted 514 different events to the state's attorney's office. Just some technical information for you. All the squad cars, as I mentioned, have a body worn cam, or no, I'm sorry, have a in-car camera system. Those sync directly with the body worn, so when an officer gets into the squad car, there's a cradle, they put their body worn camera into that cradle, and it marries it with the in-car camera. So if you turn on the in-car camera, it turns on the body worn camera and vice versa. If I'm standing outside the car and I turn on my body worn camera, it's going to turn on my in-car camera. So as a general rule, inside the car, there's the forward-facing camera, there's a panoramic camera, and there's the backseat camera, and then the body worn. So we're creating essentially four videos every time we turn on the body worn camera, or anytime we turn on the in-car camera. Our command cars and our investigation cars do not have in-squad cameras. The, each, the body worn camera and the in-car camera have 30-second pre-record, so when you activate and start creating a file, the system will grab the first, or the preceding 30 seconds and embed that into your file. There's no audio on that, but the 30 seconds leading up to the activation of that video will be embedded into the file. The body worn cameras can hold up to 12 hours of HD video. A lot of the in-car system is not HD. All of the body worn camera video is created in HD. When recording HD, the battery can last up to 19 hours on standby, so the officer, just being out in the field, the battery will last. If an officer's on a scene for seven continuous hours, that the camera will continue with no problems with the battery. We've not experienced, outside of some batteries going, just like any battery, eventually the life wears out on it. We've had a few that's happened with, as a general rule, we've not had, experienced a significant problem with cameras going dead. Anytime an officer comes in to write a report, they'll put the camera into a transfer station, which then downloads that data. And then the process of downloading the data, the camera also starts to recharge. For officers who aren't coming in or are writing their reports in the car, we purchased for each one of the squad cars a charging cord. If you picture an older MacBook, had a magnetic clip on it to charge the MacBook, it's kind of the same thing. It clips on, but when the officer gets out, the magnet works free so that they're not getting hung up inside the car connected to this cord. Keep in mind, though, while the cameras are built with quality, they are electronic tools, just like your cell phone, and they do periodically fail. We learned early on that the cameras are very water resistant, but they don't hold up well in a traditional downpour. So, you know, you're not going to go swimming in them. We've had a couple officers who stood out in the rain, didn't protect the camera, and the camera failed. However, they failed. We store all of our video in a local server. It's not stored in the cloud. You'll see some vendors, you have to store it in cloud. We have access, and all of our stuff is local. Couple expectations as we talk about cameras to keep in mind. One is as you watch the data get played back, it's showing you simply one specific view of that larger event. You're not getting everything that happened before, you're just getting 30 seconds before. You may or may not see what the officer saw in that 30 seconds. There's also things that, from the environment or the officer actions, may affect how that video gets played back. If the officer's running, the camera's going to bounce. If the officer, the WatchGuard video, or the WatchGuard cameras have great noise reduction in the wind, it will reduce it. However, if it's significant wind or clink on the direction, it can negatively affect what you're listening to and how that gets played back. And then just the final overall expectation to keep in mind is as you watch these videos, keep in mind that it's just part of the complete investigation, that one video is not going to show you everything that you need to know about what happened. We do have an audit and review process, more than just the transparency or the evidence. Our sergeants and lieutenants can and do review videos on a regular basis, not just to make sure we're compliant with policy, but we can identify training needs. We can watch what officers are doing, what the specific individual officer needs to do, or trends from the department as a whole. We can recognize exemplary officers. We can recognize exemplary actions that the officers are doing, and it gives us an opportunity to have officers who are doing it right, make sure they understand that, and compliment them for that. And it helps us with citizen investigations. As we go back, when a citizen says an officer did something before body worn cameras, a lot of times the investigation ended with insufficient evidence. The citizen said the officer did X, the officer said he or she did Y, and without the body worn camera video, it's hard to determine exactly what happened. It's hard to marry that he said, she said, and the body worn cameras help a lot with that. As I mentioned at the beginning of this slide, sergeants and lieutenants do a monthly review of each of the officers or sergeants. On each shift are assigned three officers as they're the primary sergeant. They review their officers' videos. Lieutenants and patrol review the sergeant videos. This is going to start getting into some of the questions that were asked before this presentation. One of the questions was, is there law that specifies and how's the policy? Yes, there's Illinois Body Worn Camera Act passed, and I believe it went into effect in January of 16, and it very heavily dictates how we will run our program and how we will monitor. It sets, it creates the 30-second pre-record. It describes when and where and how the officer's going to wear that camera, how they're going to utilize it. We'll get into retention rules here at the end, but talks about retention rules. It sets those for us, and talks about FOIA and how the community can access and how they cannot access the system. Our policy, so that's the law, our policy is very specific, almost cut and paste of the law. That's how specific the law is, and so we follow the policy or the law throughout our policy. Couple things to keep in mind as we keep going forward, words that can get confusing if you don't understand them. The word "on" doesn't mean I've pushed the button and I'm now creating this file. When I put the camera at the beginning of the shift and I attach it to my uniform, the camera should be on, meaning powered up. It's ready to go, and it's creating that loop that creates the 30-second pre-record. So when the officer's sitting in their squad car, when the officer's in briefing room, whatever the officer's doing, it's creating, it's recording, it's creating that 30-second loop. And when you hit record, which creates the activation, so when you activate that camera, then it's making the file, and the event file is what we eventually see submitted as evidence or that the officer reviews. So when you talk about, when does the officer have to have a camera on, is different than when does the officer have to be capturing the event in which they are participating in. So the law requires that any officer in uniform, and it describes not just uniform as exposed badge and exposed gun. So if I'm wearing jeans and badge and my gun's exposed, I'm by law considered in uniform. So if I'm in uniform and my department has a body worn camera program, I shall have that camera on me. And that camera shall be powered up. It shall be on. And then it shall be creating that event file or be activated anytime I'm performing a law enforcement activity. And that gets, we lay out in the law, lays out what a law enforcement activity is. But basically, if I'm doing my job, if I'm outside my squad car doing a law enforcement activity enforcing law, I should be recording that. There are some exemptions to when that can be on. So if there's a, not the opportunity, so something happens and I'm just, I'm not even fully in uniform yet, or some other event, or the victim or witness had requested deactivation and I hadn't had a chance to reactivate it yet, the law recognizes that and our policy recognizes that, or if I'm interacting with a confidential source, the camera should be off. While the camera is on, it does not need to be activated if I'm at a special event or any activity unrelated to an investigation of a crime, community meetings. So if I'm in uniform at the city council meeting, I would have the camera on, but I wouldn't be recording that council meeting. If I'm working Sweet Corn Festival. If I'm working Sweet Corn Festival, I'm going to have that camera on, but I'm not going to be recording every interaction I have, not creating a, a, a event file for every interaction I have while just walking around at that special event. We, by law and by our policy, the officer is ultimately responsible to make sure at the beginning of the shift, that that camera is working. As I mentioned earlier, every officer's been issued an individual camera. It's serial numbered to them. That individual officer is responsible to make sure at the beginning of the shift, the camera works and to make sure that it's, if they're in a squad car that has a, a 4RE or an in-squad camera system, they're required to make sure that it's synced appropriately and that it's functioning correctly. Officers, if they are, when an officer's engaged with somebody who has a reasonable expectation of privacy, the officer has to let that individual know that the recording, that they're being recorded. If the officer's engaged with somebody and there's not a reasonable expectation of privacy, the officer does not have an obligation to let the, the individual know that they're, the, the event is being captured. Video retention, again, this is set very strictly by the law. I've got quotes here, it's from the law. Recordings made on an officer camera must be retained for a period of ninety days. So we can't go any shorter than that. It has to be at the minimum of ninety days. The next box is where we get a lot of questions, and that is after ninety days, unless the, the video has been flagged, and we'll get in a minute what it means to be flagged, we shall destroy all recordings. We cannot keep that video longer than ninety days unless it's been flagged. What makes it flagged? One of seven things. There, there's a formal complaint has been filed, the officer's fired a firearm, there's been a death or great bodily harm occurred during the event, arrest or detention. The law specifically excludes traffic stops and business offenses. The data is used for an internal investigation, so if I'm investigating a, a citizen complaint, I'm going to flag the video. There's evidentiary value to the video, so it might have been captured during a, a, an investigation that's not been an arrest yet, but there's evidentiary value to it. I'm going to have to save that for, I'm going to have to flag that. And it also permits the officers who, for one reason or another, believe that it needs to be flagged, we can flag it under those circumstances. When an officer completes the activation shuts, ceases the, the active recording, the officer has to then categorize what was just captured. They can categorize it either from the Vista, which is the body worn camera, or the 4RE system, which is the in-squad car camera system. If you do it on one, since it's synchronized, it captures and, and labels all four of the videos, as I mentioned earlier. What you're looking at here is the stuff that's in red is automatically flagged. So an officer makes an arrest and categorizes that video file as an arrest, it's automatically going to be held for two years. It's not going to roll off in the ninety day period. If the officer categorizes it as a use of force, it's automatically going to be held for the two years. It's not going to roll off the system in the ninety day period set out earlier. Been a lot of discussion on the FOIA. When can a, a citizen access and how? Again, taken directly from the law, the Illinois Body Worn Camera Act restricts access to most files. Quoting again, recordings made with the use of an officer worn body camera are not subject to disclosure under Freedom of Information Act, except, and then it lays out three exceptions to that rule. But as the default, the body worn camera is not accessible by FOIA. One of the first exceptions is if the subject has a reasonable expectation of privacy and the video has been flagged, not the flagging we discussed earlier, but simply five points this time. The video has been flagged through the filing of complaint, discharge of a firearm, use of force, arrest, or the officer created a death or great bodily harm.
Joel, could you go back to that last one that you just said and cover that just one more time before we go forward?
Go back to?
The slide you were just on. Yes.
Okay. The, it's going to get explained as we go a little bit further, but again, the law restricts access. It says, recordings with the use of body worn camera are not subjected to disclosure under the Freedom of Information Act. So if, if you and I are, I stopped to talk to you, it's a consensual contact and it's, you're not arrested or any of the seven that we talked about here in a second, that is not subject to, to FOIA. Okay? So we'll, we'll get, this is confused, very, very, very confusing. It took us a while to really wrap our heads around exactly what all this meant, and you're going to see at the end of here, a flow chart that we had to create to, to fully understand the FOIA rules of this law. So i- if you stick with me a second, it may make a little bit more sense. The second exception would be that the video has been flagged, again, the, the five mentioned above, and the subject does not have a reasonable expectation of privacy. The, the, the two biggest differences when the person has a reasonable expectation of privacy is the, the subject of the video has to be a victim or a witness, and if the person who's at, who files the FOIA, makes the FOIA request, isn't the subject, the person who is the subject of the video, who has a reasonable expectation of privacy, has to give written consent for us to release that. And then finally, it would be the video is the requester, or, or the, the subject of the video is the Requestor. So let me keep going and, and get to the, the flow chart, Jared, and, and we'll, we'll see how that works out. Couple of things to keep in mind, the entire case file may not be accessible, even if it is subject to FOIA. And if it is subject to FOIA, we still have to redact it. We can't release unredacted video file. And just because it met the, any of the three previous exceptions, it still has to meet all of the requirements under FOIA. I'm not a FOIA expert, but I know there are things that, just because it's, it's a document, open investigations and other such things, aren't subject to FOIA. And so it still has to, to go into the FOIA portal, I guess, is a better way. You've got to hit these three exceptions to, to then become eligible for the FOIA. And I don't know how well this shows up on your screens, but we, we had to create a flow chart just for us to wrap our heads around and understand when something can be released under FOIA and when it cannot be released under FOIA. And it gets pretty confusing, and we have to take a step back a couple of times sometimes and, and ask the questions. Is the law permitting this to be released through FOIA? That is the quick down and dirty overview. I'm not going to, I'm going to leave the, the flow chart up so you can read it. The next slide would say questions on it, so I will open it up to questions now.
Questions for Joel?
Or Bryant?
Or Bryant.
Bill's raising his hand.
I don't see, I'm not seeing, let me make sure I see everybody.
I'm raising mine too, but.
Okay, Bill?
Yeah, on the, the ones that we share with the state's attorney, you said there were five hundred fourteen last year. I'm not real familiar with the criminal process, but would those be available through discovery then to the, to the defense?
Yes.
Format? Do we provide that to the defense or does she have to, does the state's attorney have to share that with the defense?
State's attorney has that responsibility to share the evidence with the defense.
Okay. So presumably whoever they're defending would have access to that, and that may be more than what they could get through FOIA.
Yeah, I, I can't answer that directly, but yes, they, whatever they would get for evidence, whatever the state's going to use as evidence, the, the defense would have access to that.
Okay, and so for them to get that many, there's actually charges filed and it's likely, I'm trying to figure out, that's like almost two every workday. That seems like a lot. Does that count like multiple clips from one incident?
So that, that is what they have access to, that doesn't mean that's what they have used. I can't tell you what they did or did not use. So I, I do a traffic stop and I arrest somebody for a suspended driver's license, and that goes to trial. The state's attorney has access if they want to use that video, they, we've granted them access to it. I don't know that they did or didn't use that video. These are files that they, they've had cases that we have submitted to them where we submitted body worn camera video as well. I can't tell you what they did or did not do with that evidence.
Okay, yeah, all right, thanks, that helps.
Jared, you had a question, and then Dennis?
I, I, I've got a few, but thank you for sharing this. My first question is going to be about the availability of this presentation and that flow chart for, for review, because there's a lot in there to go over, and we're going to post, we're going to post this up by, I'm assuming in some form or fashion to the city website for people to access.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, and a good, a good version of that flow chart would be, I know you had to compress it to get it into the PowerPoint, but a ni- a nicer version of that would be, would be good, so we can all try and wrap our heads around it, because obviously it is a complicated process. So I'll just do, do a couple of quick ones that I got right off of this, and I'll let other, other people ask questions. So you had mentioned that the, that you guys periodically review video as part of process of reviewing the officers. Can you share a little bit more about how often that, that's, that's conducted? And then I just have a quick follow-up about that too.
So we're, I will say this before I say that, we're in the process of discussing how to enhance the current review. Currently, a, a sergeant, like I said earlier, has three officers assigned to that, that sergeant as a monitoring sergeant. The monitoring sergeant's responsible to review randomly three videos created by each officer a month. What we're looking at enhancing that to is picking out specific categories and having having the sergeants review specific categories, which you have to be careful with is if we start saying, okay, review five or six categories, now we're overwhelming, it's going to be very time consuming for the sergeant to do that. So we're trying to find a balance between what can reasonably be reviewed and with the opportunity to get the most out of, out of it.
So a quick follow-up to that, Joel, does, is that review process our policy? That's not dictated by the statute, right? Or is that dictated by the statute?
It's not written, I don't believe it's written in policy. It's a procedure and, and, and a practice that has been directed to the sergeants to do.
Chief, can you clarify on where they know that that's what it is and where we're going to shift, shift that if we're going to shift it to categorical review of some kind or, or any of that?
So Jared, that's a, that's a policy decision that we have. We set that. It's been around for squad car cameras for a while. Some of what Joel's referring to is that we've tried to, now that we've gotten a year plus, year and a half pushing into this, where are the, where can we shore this up? Where can we do better? And so that's sort of what he's, some of what he's, what he's talking about. We've actually had a couple of meetings recently with regards to current goings on and how to use that, and how does that, how does that influence what we want to do? So let's do, we want to do some more, but we don't want to make it overly burdensome. So that's, that, that's a policy decision, however though, as opposed to the statute.
Okay, and is that in UPD Policy 142 that was mentioned?
I believe the, the, the policy is, the policy number itself is 421, and the review has been something that we've set as a procedure in-house, but it hasn't been documented in this policy. So that's one of the things that we're looking to change.
Okay, and just a, a quick comment and suggestion to you both as we're talking about transparency and, and all these issues going forward, something to be considered. You know, we're start, talking about CPRB and its role in reviewing complaints and even expanding its role in, in oversight and all those kinds of things. If this is a review process that's already kind of happening in place, perhaps this is, you know, an educational opportunity, learning opportunity where these reviews would be publicly available. You know, we talk about how often do we see what officers are doing on, on a given basis? How are their reviews being done? Where is the accountability? Is it all handled within the departments? And it doesn't really, you know, we don't really see it anywhere else in the public sphere, even us on council don't really see those kinds of things. So food, food for thought in a, that just came to my mind is listening to this, is this might be a perfect opportunity to put some of that stuff out into the public realm to say, hey, look, here's, here's what our review process looks like. We're going to put up one out of every single one of these officers' reviews every month if they're getting three videos reviewed, something along those lines, just food for thought. And Lieutenant, I had one more question on the thirty second pre-record. I know we've talked about it before, but I just want to make sure that I have this right, and I'll stop my questions until other folks have had a chance. The pre-record, so basically what I understand is they're always recording. It's just, it's keeping a loop of thirty seconds that it's constantly recycling, and in the moment you hit that button, it actually started thirty seconds ago, right? And then it starts the file, but it's always in that loop. It's always recording that loop constantly when it's on, right? That's what it's on process is. Okay, just wanted to make sure I had, had, remembered that from the description. All right, that's all, that's all for now. I'll have some more later.
Sharice?
Yeah, I just wanted to know, so what it does, the thirty second loop, is that like, you know, a ring thing? Like it, it gets that thirty seconds and it holds it, and then it's another thirty seconds and it holds it? But at the end of the evening when they're done, or morning, where they're done with shift, those, if there was nothing significant happening for an officer to actually have to record an event, then those thirty second loops are deleted? Or are they saved in the cloud for ninety days like the other stuff? Or that's what I want to understand.
On the body worn camera, once the, the camera shut off, whatever was not saved through the activation process is gone. So I cannot go back on the body worn camera and grab something that occurred earlier in the shift.
So in other words, yeah, those thirty, those thirty second kind of ring loops are?
I, I don't know the, the technical computer.
Well, I'd just say ring, like, you know, like the doorbell, because whenever there's like motion, they'll, they'll record for so many seconds what's going on. And if it's nothing really significant, the owner usually can decide. I mean, it'll hold it for as long as you allow it to hold it. But with these, the, the thirty second loops are, are gone at the end of shift when, if there's nothing, if there's no other activity that's tied to that thirty second loop.
If I put the camera on at the beginning of the shift and I make no files, I, I don't push the record button at all at the end of the shift, when I plug it into the transfer station, there's no files that transfer, and the next night when I put the camera on, that thirty, any, the last thirty seconds of my shift are gone.
Okay.
Dennis and then Mary Alice.
I, I, I had a question about one of the slides that you had showed a little bit midway through your presentation. The topics which showed what activities would be flagged for review and what would not, and it looked like one of the things that were And it looked like one of the things that were, was not automatically flagged for review is the deployment, deployment of a long gun. And I thought that was ironically strange that I would think that anytime a long gun was brought into deployment, that would have to be automatically flagged. Am I wrong?
So depending on the reason, so the officer responds to a call which he needs or she needs to deploy the long gun. The officer takes it out of the holder, starts towards that call and the incident was resolved before the officer even gets on scene. Then the officer goes back and re-engages the weapon into their squad car, his or her squad car. There, there, nobody in public, they never exposed the weapon to anybody. That isn't, that doesn't become a flag through the state requirements. And it will just roll off after 90 days. If the officer then points that weapon at somebody, there's most likely going to be an arrest out of that. And it's going to get flagged as an arrest. So my action may be one thing, but it's going to get incorporated into another.
And does the officer have to initially manually start the recording to, to indicate or to record the fact that a long gun is being a part of the interaction that is happening?
No, the, the, there are several triggers on the N-Squad system.
Yeah.
So there's speed triggers, there are, if you turn your lights, lights on, if you take the action necessary to unlock your long gun, those actions will kick on the system. So if I deploy my weapon, it's kicking on the system.
And the other thing that I didn't see listed was a Taser deployment, or did I miss that?
That would, that's, that would fit in with use of force. So if I, if I use my Taser, if I deploy my Taser, that is considered a use of force and the officer will tag or categorize the video as a use of force.
Yeah, so, so the tagging is happening after the fact when it's being reviewed by the the officer who does the reviewing in-house. Is that correct?
No, the, at the completion of the event, so we'll use your, your Taser. I'm involved in a, a situation in which I deploy a Taser. The individual's now in custody and is going to jail. I get my car, I shut off the system. It then requires, before it can go to the next step, it requires me to categorize what I just did. So I'm identifying it as a use of force. Or I'm identifying it as an arrest, depending upon what it is I just did.
So the officer who was involved in the activity and whose body camera did the recording is the one who decides whether it's flagged or not?
Correct.
Does anybody disagree with the officer by reviewing what happened during the event?
So that's one of the things the sergeants are looking for when they do their reviews.
Yeah.
Is, was this tagged correctly? Did the officer appropriately tag this? We also are, we're in that system quite a bit. So if I'm doing a, a citizen complaint, if I'm investigating a citizen complaint, I'm looking at the video and I'm looking at how, how it's tagged. And sergeants, when they're reviewing to write their own reports or other officers, they're in that system. So we're looking at how it's, how it's tagged. The, 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 you can't create, the, the computer program can't decide. There's not an objective, automatic way for the computer program to decide, what did this officer just do?
Yeah. So if the, if the reviewing officer is scanning through the files of an officer that's been on duty, is it like looking at a, at a VCR that's fast forwarding and you're going from, from? Are you seeing like a speeded up version of the entire shift and you are able to stop it at certain times when you see the officers have stopped their car, turned their lights on and are approaching somebody?
So there's, there's numerous different ways for me to review an officer's activity.
Yeah.
I can pull up the, the officer specifically through a specific date, through a date range, through a category range. I can pull up multiple officers through the category range, through specific dates. I can, it's a, the backend which is, is, will then show me all of the, the files that that officer or officers, depending upon how I've categorized what my search is.
Yeah.
Pull up all the videos and then I have to go into each individual video file to view what, what is going on.
Yeah, and, and so they're categorized in the database sort of numerically or by some kind of searchable indexing?
Yes, it's very, very, very searchable.
Yeah, well, it's interesting. It would be interesting for for us to observe how, how, how a, a tape from an officer after end of a duty is scanned, just to see the process so we could understand it easily.
Okay.
All right, see, that'd be educational for us and I, it's, as you say, it's a little bit hard to wrap your, your mind around it, but if, if we watched the process once, we would all understand it really well. All right, thanks.
Any other questions? Mary Alice?
So I'm, I'm trying to understand the difference between a, a system automated response versus an individual automated response. So from, from what I understand from your presentation, when a police officer comes on shift, they, and they're getting ready to go out, they put the body camera on, they go into their car and then they sync up their body camera with the car. Is this, so, so far am I correct?
Correct.
Okay, okay, so those are all, those are all like officer, what they're doing, those are the actions, right? The syncing is of the system, actually, but, so my question is, when it's on, it's, it's pretty much, it sounds to me like it's almost like standby. Because it's not actively recording forward, it's only doing that 30 second loop. So if an officer is responding to a call for service, does that officer have to then grab that body camera video and put it on their body and then activate it? How does that, what, what actions go on there?
Good question. So if I understand, let me just walk you through the process. So in, in our briefing room is a bank of seven transfer stations with multiple different cradles in each transfer station. So the officer at the end of the shift puts the camera in there. Beginning that shift, the officer takes the camera out and attaches it in a forward facing manner to their uniform. The camera, when it comes out of the cradle is on. So it's creating that 30, from the moment it comes out of the cradle, it's on. The officer attaches it, if the officer pushes the button at that point, it's going to create an active file. So the officer puts it on, the officer walks out to their squad car and syncs it with the squad car they're going to be driving for the evening. So now if the officer pushes the button manually or turns on the squad car system manually, both systems come on in unison. But there's also a lot of triggers within the system in the car. So if the officer reaches a specific speed, the camera system's going to kick on, which kicks on the body worn camera and the squad car camera. If the officer disengages the long gun, it's going to kick both systems on. If the officer turns on the lights, the emergency lighting system, it kicks the system on. So the officer, the, the really, about the only time, so the officer responds to a non-emergency call, the officer would have to remember to turn on the system. But any emergency call, if they've used lighting or numerous other situations, it's going to kick that system on.
So this is potentially one of the reasons why it made sense to buy kind of an all in one system, it sounds to me, because it allows for that interaction between different items going on in the car versus kicking the body camera or the dash cam video on at the same time. So it's all synced amongst each other.
It's all synced amongst, amongst each other. And when we go on the backend and the, the system to review things, it puts all of it into a nice neat box.
Okay, all right, that makes sense. My, my next two questions have more to do with definitions in the FOIA request system. So I don't know if it's possible for you to put up that lovely flow chart again.
It's still up my mind.
Otherwise it'll have to be from memory, which.
Now here, let me see if that, is it up there?
Yeah, yeah, okay. So, so my first question is, how do you define the subject of the video?
That would be the person who's the primary, who's the officer talking to.
Okay, so if the officer is talking to somebody, but if there are people, if they're like, people standing on the sidewalk noticing what's going on during this interaction, they're not the subject. It's only the person that they're individually interacting with?
Individual or individuals.
Individual or individuals. So, okay, so the subject would be any communication that they would have, an officer would have with a person or, or individuals at that particular location. That would be a subject.
Correct.
Okay, my second question is, has to do with expectation of privacy. So I wasn't, hoping you could expand on that.
I'm going to punt this one to Chief Seraphin.
Okay. All right, Mary Alice, go ahead. Again, I'm sorry, your question.
I was just talking about definitions on the flow chart here and I'm wondering if you could expand upon what is the expectation of privacy?
So with regards to this particular, in this context, the expectation of privacy usually has to do with things like where someone might, for instance, in someone's bathroom, we go to a domestic and maybe there's one of, one half of the domestic is inside the bathroom crying, which is different than if they were standing on the sidewalk or in the street or in a public place like Walmart perhaps. So something like that. So in this context, that's a quick sort of definition of, of the reasonable expectation of privacy with regards to this analysis.
So would it be fair to say if it's on a private, not, a private property that's not open to the general public most times, that you would have an expectation of privacy if you're indoors?
Indoors is probably one of the areas too where there, there would be some more expectation of privacy. And I think that's kind of the analysis and I suppose maybe Jim Simon or one of the city attorneys might do a slightly better job. But generally speaking, in, so a car in a public street, no, there wouldn't be an expectation of privacy there. In someone's bedroom or inside their house, there, there would be a higher expectation of privacy.
Okay, all right. So if, so if I understand this flow chart, the first thing is, is if you're being, if you're being talked, if you're talking with a police officer, then you have, you can FOIA this, this video. Right, this body camera video.
Yes.
And then the second piece is this very complicated chart that I haven't completely taken in in terms of reasonable expectation of privacy. But just to go back, do we have any, have we had any requests from a subject of a video for, for their video? Have we had a, have we had any requests, FOIA requests from a subject that wanted access to their video outside of having lawyers contact you and so forth?
Yes.
Yes. Do you know roughly speaking, how many of those videos have been released?
No.
Okay. If somebody.
Let me just, let me, let me back up just one second if I can here, because I think this might help sort of illustrate the, the conversation. There are two analysis, analyses, I guess, that have to happen before the body worn camera footage goes out the door pursuant to FOIA. The presumption is, and I think Jared, I think you actually had, had Joel back up. The presumption is the body worn camera footage is not subject to FOIA. That's the presumption. So we're going to start with that as opposed to, if you're dealing it, so this is just what the body worn camera act. The presumption is it's not subject to FOIA. Unless there's those, the three exceptions on that particular screen. And so these were what, with different, different flaggings that were on there. And then there's a subset of the expectation of privacy or not an expectation of privacy. So that is, I just wanted to say that first. Once it's decided that indeed it is pursuant to the body worn camera, then it can, then it, or it sort of passes that hurdle of the FOIA restriction, then it goes off to the FOIA and then it gets its regular set of redactions. And that analysis then goes a little bit deeper than beyond that. So I just wanted to say there's like two prongs to this.
Yeah, yeah, and I'm glad you said that. So in, in this slide here under A, it sounds to me like if you, if the police has an interaction with a citizen and it's one of these five things, then they can request the body camera video. Does that make sense? So it has, does it have to fill in one through five here in order for that subject to have access to that, to request access to that video?
Yes.
So the, the subject of the video can always get their video. If a, someone else in the world, the news gazette, or someone else wants to see the video of whatever Mary Alice encounter was with the police, then it has to be one of these five. And if there's an expectation of privacy, B and C. Or if there's not an expectation of privacy because it occurred on the sidewalk, then it wouldn't need B and C. It would just have to be one of the top, I guess, A sub one through five.
So the, so the A one through five only is for certain kinds of release. But if you're a subject who's having an encounter with a officer on the street, you can request that body camera video, even if it doesn't fall within these five categories here under A. Joel's shaking, he said yes.
Yes. And, and we've had city attorneys in this room, we've had dry erase boards, we've reached out to other agencies and tried to make sure that we're all sort of understanding. And we think we're fairly solid. And I will just say too, that this still is a, the, the statute went into effect in January of 16. And so I am sure that this area of law is still being sort of hammered out. And the Attorney General's Office would have an opinion on some of these things as, as well. But this is our best understanding right now.
Is the expectation of privacy defined by law?
So the expectation of privacy is sort of a, I guess I would say it's more fluid analysis. And again, I, I don't know that I'm the, the right guy to say, I will tell you that in certain places like, we, we, it's easy to understand public parks, public streets, public right of ways, those that, that's, and, and a lot of, a lot of police interactions occur there. And access places with, that have, no one has a public expectation of privacy, if you will, even on, in Shooks or Walmart or some other mire. Then as you move into, what about the front porch? The front stoop of the house, the back deck, where does this go? Now, how about the front entryway of their home? I think everybody, bedrooms and bathrooms, we all say yes. And as you sort of transition, and I think that can be a little bit tricky. So, and I think that analysis, but generally, inside the home, there would be more of a, I think the courts would clearly say that there's a, there's more of a expectation of privacy there.
Okay, all right, I'll, I'll let other people ask their questions. Thank you.
I'm just looking now. Who hasn't had a question yet?
Mayor, I see Sharice's hand up.
Okay, Sharice and then Bill.
Okay, what, Bryant, what I just want to understand, and Joel, what I just kind of want to understand because, go back, go back to that, that, that one picture with the, with the one through three, A, B, C, Roman numerals. One, that one, yeah, exceptions. Because what, I'm, I'm, I'm kind of like Mary Alice, what I want to understand is that if I encounter Officer X and let's say I have an issue with Officer X and I go up to Officer X and I'm giving him whatever. And Officer X says, yes ma'am, that's the way it is. Toodles, you know, be on your way. And that's like the end of it. That would not activate him to for the, make a video. It would be the 30 second loop thing, right?
So with regards to the 30, I guess I've got a couple of things. Number one, 30 second loop, so it's only keeping in essence the last 30 seconds. When it gets to 31, number one falls off. So there aren't a series, I want to make sure there's not a series of video recordings that are 30 seconds. It's just constantly got the prior 30 seconds. The, the issue is, and this sort of maybe gets a little bit to the triggering, and I think there was some question. Essentially, it's either going to come on manually or it's going to come on on one of the automatic triggers. So for instance, Sharice, you and I are, I, I see you at the Sweet Corn Fest. So, uh, for instance, uh, Sharice, you and I are, uh, I, I see you at the Sweet Corn Festival. And it would be on, it's just got that running 30 seconds. We have a conversation, and I, and I wander away. We just talk, uh, about the beautiful sunshine and lemon shakeups. There's not any law enforcement activity. If, on the other hand, someone points and says, those two guys are fighting over there, the officer has to manually activate the camera, and then go address the fight and do law enforcement activity. So, it kind of would depend on whether or not the interaction with you was law enforcement activity.
Okay, so if it's not law enforcement activity, if I'm just asking directions, or something like that, then that is not going to be recorded. Therefore, at the end of shift, that's going to be dropped off of what happened during, communications during the day, so to speak. It won't be flagged by the sergeant, correct?
Um, well, yes, it will, it won't be flagged. Um, so, and, and I guess I'll jump onto, onto one other thing. As long as an officer makes a recording, um, and the term flagging, I think, makes it a little bit confusing. We always keep the last 90 days of stuff.
Okay.
That's, then as long as they've made a recording. Not the lemon shakeup talk, but if we're actually doing law enforcement activity, the last 90 days is retained. It gets flagged for the two years, um, and or longer. So, let's say it's a, it's something on a first guy that responds on a murder scene. That's evidence, and evidence for murders we keep until the end of days. Um, that evident, that would be kept even longer than, than, than the two, than the two years. But to your specific question, um, if it's not, uh, law enforcement activity, it would not be there when they reset that, that camera, it would not, it would not have saved that discussion.
So, if I wanted to FOIA, it, it's not there to be FOIA'd?
Correct. No records responsive to your request would be the answer.
Okay. That's what, that's what I was trying to understand. So, even if I'm the subject of the video, and I'm making a request, or what I think is the video, and, but because there was no law enforcement activity, so to speak, then I, I cannot FOIA, I will not get records because those records will have been, uh, deleted, so to speak.
Well, yeah, it never would have been created.
Oh, okay.
It would have been, that 30 seconds would have been rolling off. Um, I'll, I'll jump real fast to the statute itself. Uh, law enforcement related encounters or activities include but not limited to: traffic stops, pedestrian stops, arrests, searches, interrogations, investigations, pursuits, crowd control, traffic control, non-community caretaking interactions with an individual on patrol, or any other instance in which the officer is enforcing the laws of the municipal, municipality, county, or state. So, i- i- we've tried to really, it's easy, it's, it's like everything they do predominantly, um, except we don't need eight hours of them working the detail at the Sweet Corn Festival, or when if they go and they work on a line night football game detail, or some of these other things. So, it's pretty much law enforcement activity, the camera's on.
Okay. On, but not activated?
Correct.
Okay.
Good, good.
Bill.
I'm getting it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Bill Brown.
Um, yeah. I'm trying to, uh, imagine what's involved in the redaction process, and how, um, how much time we spend doing it, for one thing, and how often we do it. So, anytime we release video for FOIA, the, the main thing I can think of is you'd probably have to blur out bystanders, or something like that. Um, so, who actually does that? Do you have any statistics on how much video we release, we release through FOIA? And then, if we release video to the state's attorney, do we have to do any redaction on that? If we release video to the public, to the media, I assume it would be the same sort of, um, rules that if we were releasing it for FOIA. And so, there would be redaction on that. So, can you go through that a little bit?
I can try. I don't have good numbers for you, uh, Bill, with regards to how many we've, videos we have actually released through FOIA. Um, and that's something that, um, I, I know that Tony Weck, our FOIA coordinator, would have that information somewhere, somehow. Um, I just don't have that available to me tonight. Um, with regards to FOIA, when someone makes a FOIA request, um, and, and I'm not, let's just step away from body cams just for a second. FOIA requests, whether it's, uh, the nosy neighbor across the street, the news gazette, or the Chicago Tribune, those are all FOIA requests, and the analysis is all, i- is, is all, is all the same when it comes to releasing those documents. So, um, I just wanted to say that. The other thing, uh, that you'd, I think, um, we, we had touched on a little bit there, was the state's attorney's office. So, when the state's attorney's office, they get unredacted, um, full video files that they, that they get. When it comes to the discovery process, which is where the state, the prosecutor, if you will, tenders the, uh, evidence to the defense, uh, they would also then give them access. I am not an expert on exactly the mechanism by which that happens. I believe that the state's attorney actually has, we grant them access, and I, I think I'll let Joel speak to that briefly, with regards to what they do when they get, uh, how we get that to the state's, uh, the, the state's attorney's office.
Okay, so, we have, uh, a secure line, and, and I'm going to leave it at that. IT could maybe define it better. But the state's attorney has secure access to our server. So, if the state's attorney's office, um, i- i- if body worn camera or squad car camera video was, exists, they can go directly into our server and get that file. So, they don't have to, um, make a request. In the old days, we had to burn videos, uh, and send it over there. So, we don't have to burn the video. They go into the, to the server, they grab what file they need, and they do with, with it whatever they need to do.
And as far as the redaction goes, who, who actually does the video blurring? And, um, do you have any estimate of how much time we spend doing that?
I, I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
The, the redaction, like when they have to, not, not for the state's attorney, but for FOIA requests or media requests? Um, who actually goes in and alters the video in order to redact bystanders, or whatever they have to do in order to meet FOIA?
Typically.
Is that a police department person that does that, or is that?
Department employee, a civilian police department employee is the one who typically.
Okay. And then, when the state's attorney accesses the files, I assume there's an access log, so you can see which files have been accessed by the state's attorney? And they only have permission for certain types, is that?
They, they can get into any of our files.
Okay, and is there a, is there a log, so that you know which ones they accessed and when?
There is a log that can show me who's been in what file. I don't know if I can run a log or report to show me what files have been accessed. But I, if, if there's a question was, so something, something leaks out, something gets out that we, we say we didn't release that, I can go into that file and see who's logged on, viewed that video, and who exported it, who downloaded, who did anything with that file.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Jared?
Right, um, a couple more, uh, questions. Uh, so, in flagging, uh, is that set by the state statute?
Yes.
Flagable, that's a state statute thing, right?
Yes.
Can you go, can you go back to that slide real quick, Joel?
Sure. But there was. So, these are the seven things that the, the state requires to be flagged.
Okay. And these are all things that are, because the initial flag, I guess, is, uh, after whatever has happened, has happened, is in the field, comes from an officer. But a complaint would be different, right?
Correct. So, the, the, the officer categorizes as a, as a citizen contact. They, they talked to, to Mrs. McGillicuddy about whatever, her barking dog, let's, let's make it that. And, and Mrs. McGillicuddy then, within the next 90 days, files a complaint about that interaction. So, then, the, whoever investigates that complaint can then go and flag that, or, or, or it'll still get same, um, categorization, but will put it in a special spot, so that it's going to remain there for two years.
Right, okay, um.
We can secure it, so that at the end of the 90 days, it doesn't roll off.
Right, right, right. Uh, okay, so, is, are citizen interactions, uh, generally recorded then, by, by officers? With Mrs. McGillicuddy and her barking dog?
Well, that would be law enforcement activity, so it should be, yes.
Okay. Because that's a, they're, they're on a call.
Right. Pretty much, um, the vast majority of what we do will be recorded. What's not getting recorded is I get out at the, the, I get out at Schnucks to, 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 to buy a sandwich. And I, I, I come across, uh, somebody, and I engage them in just a general conversation. That's not going to get recorded.
Okay.
At the moment, they start complaining about, uh, hey, officer, can I, can I tell you about, um, my, my ex? Uh, I've got disorder of protection, and, and I feel like they're violating it. The officer should then activate that remainder of that, that contact.
Okay. Uh, do we keep statistics on the categories of, uh, videos that we take?
No.
Is it available to you through your logs?
I, I, I could probably run a report to tell me. I, anecdotally, I'll tell you, citizen contact's probably the largest.
Sure.
It, hands down, is, is, is going to be the largest category.
Well, this is another one of those, uh, ideas of, you know, we keep track of, uh, how many pedestrian stops we have, traffic stops we have. This is another data point we should definitely and absolutely be keeping track of, is how many recordings does the UPD have to date, uh, any given day? Uh, and what are they categorized as? You see?
Keep in mind, every day that changes.
I know.
At the end of 90 days, so, I, I do a video today, and it's categorized as citizen contact. At the end of 90 days, that video's rolling off.
As long as it's not flagged.
As long as it's not, just, it, it's a innocuous contact, it's going to roll off. It started the shift, officers will do a, uh, uh, check, a, a camera system check. So, that's going to be on there, and that's going to roll off for 90 days. So, every, every day, something's rolling off the system. So, i- i- it's, it's, the number of videos that we have is, is going to be a ballpark, it's not, you're not going to be able, I'm not going to be able to tell you every, without running a report every day, I can't tell you every day what, what's in the system.
I see, Chief, hold on a second, if you want to. Give me, give me one second, Jared, here, real fast. Um, yeah, so, th- there's a certain, there is a number, I, I don't have it for you tonight exactly, until I hear what you're saying with regards to. So, how many normally, how many normally do we have? Um, we had some vague idea because we had to buy storage. So, we have some idea, so we kind of know that certain things are, are falling off, um, and certain things are coming on. The, the other thing that, and, and, um, anytime we try to keep stats, and I don't, Joel might be able to ultimately chime in on this, but I was thinking about this early when there were some discussions. I think Dennis had brought up things like Long Gun versus Taser. And so, let's say that, that, those would all be sort of under use of force, and I might call it use of force, because I use my taser. Uh, but ultimately, we arrested someone, or maybe we didn't. Maybe we just tasered them and then took them for medical treatment, and it was, uh, as, uh, someone in a mental health crisis. Um, but if they did go to jail, well, then there's, is, I tag it as an arrest. So, I think there, we can get some general numbers about some of the videos. I don't know necessarily how instructive it might be to, um, with regards to some of the activity. But with, with regard to the sheer quantity, that's something that we can come up with, and say it's about X or Y, um, I think we can do that.
Well, and, and I'm, I'm just alluding to things we need to do, uh, things that will increase our accountability, increase our transparency. You know, this is definitely, uh, in a statisticians type situation, because we're talking about data collecting, coming up with a system to keep those, that keep that information available and public. I'm, I'm not suggesting we need to do it tonight, today. We should be doing it every day going forward. But this is a system, I'm just more talking about a system of development to keep track of these things. You know, because any one video could meet multiple different definitions. It could be an arrest, it could have also been an employment, and it shouldn't, if it meets multiples, we should probably be able to see that it meets multiples, and not just whatever one overarching thing was. And if our system doesn't allow us to tag something with multiple, uh, categories, then maybe we need to be able to do that as well. Because I don't know how flagging, if you flag it with one thing, it's only flagged with that one thing. You don't see any of the other things that it might be flagged for as well. You get what I'm, you get what I'm saying?
I, 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 I think so. I, I will also, uh, let you know as well that, uh, and again, I, I, I am a neophyte when it comes to actually tagging things, because I don't do a lot of this. But I will tell you then as well that they also, we, we use, uh, case numbers and reports. So, um, if, if Officer Jared Miller, Joel Sanders, and Bryant Seraphin all go out and do an activity, we also can co-mingle those things together, uh, via the, the police report number as well. Um, so, there, there's different ways. Um, and so, that's clearly something that we can, um, I, I think we explore further.
Okay, well, and I'm happy to talk about how, how we can make that happen, because I can, I can see in my head all those things, you know, and how you need to piece them together. Or probably we need to be able to see what you actually look at to be able to say, oh, well, you could use this or that, but I'm happy to help work on that. Uh, just a couple more quick, uh, questions. Um, let's see, where did I have that? Okay, uh, so, one thing that I didn't ask in my initial questions, but I'm very curious about, is what in the statute says, uh, what, or in our policy, about, uh, citizens asking for officers to turn cameras off to not be recorded, or turn them on in requesting to be recorded, uh, if it's not, you know, if they have any reason to believe that that officer doesn't have their camera on. So, in both, in both situations, what's the general rules in the statute and or our policy on, you know, I, I'm interacting with you, there was a fight over here, you're talking to me as an interview, as a witness, and I ask an officer not to record me? Or any of those situations? Is, are, are there situations where citizens can ask not to be recorded, and officers have to not record them? Uh, and, so, let's go with that one first.
But let's, let's go with the easy one first, because it's, it's within the law. So, a victim or witness asks not to be recorded, the officer shall shut off the recording, except in a scenario where there's a reasonable belief that the individual may become, or maybe is, a suspect. So, the, the easiest example of that would be, I go into residence on a, a domestic violence investigation, and I just get in there, and, um, I don't know yet who the offender is and who the victim is. And so, I'm talking to one person who says, I was victimized by the other individual, and I don't want you to record this. Well, if I don't know yet that this is the victim, then I'm not going to shut that off. But the moment I recognize this is the victim, and the, the person's not going to be the offender, then I shall shut the recording off. Um, as far as the, the individual who wants it turned on, I don't know that, I don't believe that's directly addressed within policy. I can tell you, I don't know why an officer wouldn't then record that if the individual wanted it recorded.
Okay. Um, what about, uh, for, uh, sub-subject A, who has, uh, come into UPD to be interviewed about something, uh, in one of our interview rooms? Are they, uh, recorded there? And then the same question, can they ask not to be recorded? Or are they automatically recorded? What happens in that situation?
So, you, you're, you're changing it up a little bit. So, in the interview room, um, and you ask not to be recorded by the interview room system?
Or an officer's body camera, if the officer had a camera on?
You're now, um, I'm, I'm running this, I'm, I'm running this through my head, I'm, I'm walking this through, because you're changing the scenario coming into, into my residence, if you will.
Right.
And so, what now becomes, you know, what am I investigating for? What's the, what's the expectation here? Um, you know, if it's a homicide, no, you're getting recorded, because the law requires. You know, if it's a homicide, no, you're getting recorded because the law requires it. Is it a barking dog complaint? We're now changing it up.
So I guess what I would say, Jared, with regards to this, is that if it's a law, if we're doing law enforcement activity and they're not a victim, in this particular instance, we're going to interview someone here, then we're going to have the body cameras would be on. You know, right now detectives, there's certain, there are multiple crimes where the, it's mandatory recording. And so we're going to start and bleed over two different things from the actual room itself to the body cameras. And there are many statutes, crimes, if you will, where the recording has to be. Even if the offender, the arrestee, and the murderer says, I don't want you to record it, we can say, okay, and we're still recording it. So I don't know if that's helpful in this analysis here or your question?
Sure, I mean, it all helps. What about like a person who's made a complaint and come in to address UPD about their complaint?
So I guess it might depend on some of the history of that. If we're doing it in our interview rooms, I would, I would want certain rooms recorded at all, at all times. There are certain times when we have officers where we want to make sure that we have that ability to do that recording. And so we've had instances where, especially if we've had accusations made and other things, we're going to want that recording. Just like certain things, we always have, officers will not go alone. We're going to have two officers in a particular, in a particular situation. So whether that's with meeting with confidential, you know, the different confidential sources or other things. So there might be instances where we would demand that, yes, we're going to go ahead. And in our interview rooms, as a matter of fact, they are subject, it's posted there, that they're subject to recording as well. Using the actual hardwired system as opposed to the body cam.
Would you be able to direct me to state statutes that govern that camera use in interview rooms? Because I'm sure it's not just, it's not in the body camera one, I wouldn't assume.
Correct, and I, yes, there won't be till tomorrow. Yeah, we can, we can, we can get that, we can get that to you. I'll have to find some detective that knows that more than I do right now. But yeah, they've, and they've added to that over the last 10 years probably, from when mandatory recordings of homicides was the first one, murders. And then they've added different statutes, whether it's statutes and or based on the category of the person, juveniles and other things. So yeah, we can get that.
So Diane, I know we've got city business to do.
We've got, yeah.
I know.
We're going to take about 10 more minutes on body cams tonight so we can get to the action items. And then we can continue this at another meeting if there's still more questions, but go ahead.
So I, I don't have 10 more minutes because I've got some other things that I can follow up with outside of the public meeting on. But what I did want to suggest to yourself, to the chief, to Joel, is that just the same as we put up this explainer, this FAQ thing that we've put up and how we have some of the other general UPD policies, often things for people to know. Everything that we've covered tonight and probably even in greater detail because it is complex. It has some, you know, nuance to it. There's a little bit more to understanding how the UPD uses body cameras. All of this should be up on the city website. You know, there should be a section that says body cameras, and it should have everything we've covered in here. How we, you know, that flow chart, how we decide when we're going to use it. So, you know, it's, it's out there and open to the public and everybody can see what our policies are. And we don't have to go digging. I mean, I wish this was, you know, I knew half of these things when we, when we approved it. It's just you learn so much, you know, when, as you, as you go on, there's, there's no way you could perceive asking so many of these things. But that would be my, my biggest suggestion. I hope of council members would agree that that's something that we should have up there. Because it does directly involve public more so almost than any other policy. I mean, this is, you know, direct documentation of UPD interaction with citizens, and it's definitely a subject worth exploring. So that's my final comment.
And Jared, I don't, I understand what you're saying there. And, and you said something that resonated with me right there, which is, it's something that we were learning too. That as we've kind of gone through this, I know that the statute passed in 16, but we didn't actually get cameras into the hands of the officers until January of 19. So we too have been learning.
Yeah, that's important for the public to know is the City of Urbana has had barely a year and a half experience with body cameras. Mary Alice, you had a question?
I have two very quick questions, I hope. Number one, if I remember correctly, we were talking about the Use of Force Committee. That included, is that overlap with this definition of use of force for the body cameras? So anything that's reviewed by the Use of Force Committee is also the same terminology used for the body cameras for use of force? So does that mean, like, we talked about deploying tasers, but does that mean showing a taser? Like pulling your taser out, that's considered use of force? Pulling your weapon out, is that considered use of force or just the actual using of it, deploying the taser?
The officer, the direction we give the officer on use of force for the category is we, we have certain criteria that when it's met, a supervisor has to do a use of force review, deployment of the taser, somebody who is injured, discharge of a firearm. Off the top of my head, I don't recall all of them, there's six or seven. When this, when this threshold's met, a sergeant has to immediately, or within that shift, do a use of force review. If the officer action starts that, then that becomes a use of force category.
So if somebody, if somebody pulls their taser out but doesn't deploy it, that's not considered use of force?
Not for purposes of this category, no. It might fit in the law, so if we, if we make an arrest, it's going to fall under the arrest.
Okay.
It's going to depend on what else is contextually going on.
My second question is, can these videos be used for training purposes?
Yes.
They can. So can they be used for training purposes for like the CPRB that we're talking about? Is that allowed or can it only be used for training purposes internally?
They can be used. I don't know about the redaction end of it. Somebody more educated than me on redaction and such would have to discuss that. But we can definitely use these for the CPRB.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Got time for one more question tonight.
But just, just one comment on that, on that tail end.
Quick comment.
The redaction, Joel, just so much as everything else, you know, that's one of those things when we're talking about being comprehensive and explaining something. Because, you know, we're asking questions about it and you don't even necessarily have the answers for us tonight. When we explain the redaction process or putting up this policy, that's something we should definitely consider. Because that's such a big part of how the citizen ends up seeing a video. So just put that out there. Thanks.
Good, good point. Okay. Thank you, Chief Seraphin, thank you Lieutenant Sanders.
Thank you.
Diane?
Yes.
I didn't have a question for them, but I just wanted to ask, I believe at the end of our special meeting, we had requested that we have a discussion item on council next steps at the next meeting, which I guess would be this meeting. Is that being planned for the next committee of the whole meeting? Or is there a reason why that wasn't on this agenda?
We just omitted that apparently. We can put it on the committee meeting.
Okay, I just wanted to, I was expecting to discuss that tonight, seeing it's not on the agenda, let's make sure we get it on the next one, please.
Will do. Thank you. All right, let's move on to reports of standing committees. The committee of the whole did not have a report out. Reports of special committees. I don't believe there is any. Reports of officers, you have the FOIA memo in your packet. I think in the interest of time, we'll just move on to new business. And if there's questions about the FOIA memo at the end of the meeting, I can take those. So we'll move on to new business for Resolution 2020-07-032R, which is a resolution approving the orientation, technical training, and continuing education standards for CPRB board members. Carol Mitten?
Thank you. As you know, since many of you attended the last CPRB meeting, we're, I would, I'm going to use the phrase rebooting CPRB and making sure that we are complying with all the reporting requirements and that we're coming into, you know, very rigid compliance with the ordinance as it exists now. And so one of the things that we discovered was that there is, there was a couple of deficiencies that we had related to the ordinance, specifically related to Section 19-23, which is the training and orientation piece of the CPRB ordinance. So part of the deficiency was that we hadn't been to counsel any time in the recent past to have the training program approved, the standards for training. And then we discovered that we had sort of uneven implementation of what training we did have. So the effort that we've made is to put a, an orientation and training program together for your consideration. We, even prior to getting your approval, we took the orientation piece and took the framework that we developed, which is what you have here, turned it into a curriculum, have recorded the curriculum. And, and it's been distributed to the CPRB members with the goal that by their next meeting, which is July 22, that they would have all taken the orientation piece of the, of the program and that that would be sufficient. And that's part of the, if you, if you decide to approve things tonight, that that would be sufficient to seat them. And then the technical piece of the training, we would, we would make sure everyone went through all the technical part by the end of the year. So that everyone who's sitting now would have gone through that same training program. And then in the future, we'll have recorded sessions that we can take folks through. And then everybody will be going through the same training program that would have been approved by the council. So, and I would just note that the, the orientation piece that we recorded last week is posted on YouTube. And if you search, and we'll, we'll put it on the CPRB website. But if you search on civilian police review board training, July 9, 2020, that should come up on YouTube if anybody wants to take a look at that. So that's, that's my overview. I think I explained how that would be implemented then for the, the board members, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Sharice and then Bill Culbrook.
Carol, I know one of the input things said something about the anti-bias training.
Yes.
That it seems to be optional. And I would have to agree with that person that it really should be, I, in my feeling, it should be not optional, it should be required. Mainly because it's an issue that is, you know, not just really going on right now. But it's something that I think everyone could benefit from on one, in one way or another. So I think it would be helpful if, if all the, the people that had to do CPRB, and I don't know, you know, what curriculum is going to be used for the anti-bias training. But I would think that it's something that they should all have to experience as well, they should all.
Let me say two things. One is, I agree with you. And the other is that this, this whole format, this whole set of, of training sessions wasn't just developed by staff. It was developed in, in concert with the, the chair and the vice chair reviewed it. We also worked with another one of the board members on, on putting all this together, and I'm sure that they would not object either. So we can move the, if it's your, if it's the wish of the council, we can move the anti-bias training to become a requirement. And we can put that in the technical training, or we could do that on a recurring basis for, for continuing education. That's, that's your preference, whatever you, would, would you like that to be part of continuing education? Or just the one time in a technical requirement?
Actually, I think probably continuing.
Okay.
It's something that, that you never, you know, you can never have too much information. To me, based on just how we evolve as people and how demographics evolve. So I think it's a continuing, you know, people learn and grow, hopefully. They grow, you know, they grow up and they don't just grow old. So it, I'm hoping that, that, that would be something that would be enlightening to anybody, you know?
Sure.
So I, I think it's continuing education would be a helpful thing.
Okay.
Excellent suggestion. Bill Culbrook?
So Sharice actually took my question, almost bait him. But I'm going to step it up a notch. So I see all three of those, the participation in the Champion County Citizens Police Academy and the conflict resolution training as extremely valuable. And I'm curious how that ended up in the optional category. You know, since we are, you know, trying to push these subject matters to either continuing or technical, it looks to me that maybe the participation in the Citizens Police Academy would be maybe a technical item that everybody should have in their path. And then also the conflict resolution training should be a technical requirement. And then I agree with Sharice that the anti-bias training, since, you know, society, you know, constantly evolves, I would agree with her that the anti-bias training would be something that we would want to have on the continuing education. So if you don't mind, since you've already spoken to the anti-bias, could you speak to the Citizens Police Academy and the conflict resolution training?
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to, to put the conflict resolution training into the technical and maybe we could do a refresher in the continuing education piece. I think the main reason why the participation in the Citizens Police Academy is optional is the time commitment. So you'll notice that we managed to do the orientation in, I think it's an hour and 16 minutes. We thought we might take longer than two hours. But the, the estimate of time for these other sessions in total is like 10 to 12 hours, which is a pretty sizable time commitment. I think the chair's desire is to maybe do some of those trainings during the regular meeting time. But notwithstanding that, that's, that's a lot of, that's a lot of time. And so the, and I, I know at least Sharice has been through the Citizens Police Academy. That's yet another big chunk of time. And this, this, this board is shifting from being, meeting quarterly to meeting monthly. They plan to, to vote on that next week. So, you know, it's, it's rapidly becoming much more of a time commitment. So I think that's the main, the main reason behind it.
I would add that Citizens Police Academy is either six or eight weeks of two to three hours.
It's three months.
Yeah, so.
It is a three-month commitment meeting once, once a week.
Once a week, for several hours.
But that's a three-hour night.
Yes, and we've already lost, we've already lost one CPRB member due to the increased time commitment. That's changed, that's happened in the last couple of months. And yeah, that's a lot of a time commitment for the Citizens Police Academy. Very valuable.
Yeah, I appreciate, you know, the reasons, but I guess my, my gentle pushback is, you know, public service is a commitment. You know, once you sign up for public service, including the CPRB, it does take a commitment. And, and I, and I do think that the Citizens Police Academy would have some value, but I get your point.
Gotcha.
I, I, I do think that it would be a valuable, if, if a person, if someone can make that type of time commitment, I think, I think it would be, I think it is a valuable thing to, to, as far as, you know, helping your knowledge regarding the, the other side of, of, and knowing the rules. I mean, that's one of the main reasons why I, that's what I got out of it. Which is kind of how I feel about anything that's law-related. At the very least, you know the rules. And so, and I think going to the Citizens Police Academy taught me a lot of different things that you, you know, you wouldn't think the normal Joe Blow, John you, you know, you wouldn't think, the normal Joe Blow, John Q. Public wouldn't think, well, that, that shouldn't be a problem, or that shouldn't be an issue. But it, you find that sometimes it can be an issue. And there are other things that you find regarding how, how in particularly, um, uh, different police forces, the reason why different police forces are different is because the citizens, uh, the police, uh, institute here at U of I is not the only place where police get trained. And, um, different police training places actually have different training things that they do.
Right.
But I like how, how they, um, what was put forth while I was in the Citizens Police Training is that, um, there's a certain standard of training that is required by the local police that attend that institute. And I think it makes a difference in understanding, uh, how law enforcement is expected to, to conduct itself at least. So.
Can't argue with that. It's incredibly valuable. Maybe that would be something that the CPRB could discuss.
So, you know.
Yeah.
We have a session under technical training about the recruitment, selection, and training of officers. And part of that is about PTI and psychological testing and the FTO program. And so I think we might, it might not be quite the same, um, as attending the Citizens Police Academy, but there's definitely, you know, a lot of the same kinds of, um, subjects will be, will be touched on in the, in the technical training.
Yeah, a lot of the subject matter that I see under the technical training falls under the, the Citizens Police Training as well. But, uh, another suggestion is that maybe if, if, you know, because it is such a, a time-consuming, um, um, commitment, uh, maybe it might be possible for Dr. Schlosser to, to do a workshop or seminar with CPRB too. That's another idea that, that, uh, that wouldn't be quite so time-consuming and just kind of an abridged version of.
We actually already have him scheduled, so thank you for the recommendation.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, he's a, he's a really good person.
I'm looking.
And very knowledgeable.
Mary Alice.
Um, I had a constituent reach out about two of the items that, and I, I'm not exactly sure how to pronounce Nicole, but the, the National Association, um, and they're, this, I'm sorry?
They, I believe they say Nicole.
Nicole, okay. Nicole has in their suggested trainings, um, one was bias-based policing, racial profiling, and the second one was community and cultural awareness. And I wanted to know if the board discussed those two items, or if there were any thoughts about that.
No, and, um, I have to, I have to say that, um, that, um, Mikhail had, had sent me, uh, a, a long training manual from Nicole and asked me to crosswalk it, and I did the best that I could, um, to, to make sure we had covered everything. So would you mind repeating those two subjects? And we'll work them into the technical training.
Yes, so community and cultural awareness and bias-based policing slash racial profiling.
Okay, we'll work that in.
And I can, I can just send you the text so you don't have to write it in.
And I would agree that those are excellent suggestions.
And, and you're okay if those go into the technical training? Is that where you want them?
That's a good question. Um, so technical training, so the difference between the two is one is kind of like an overview. I have too many tabs up right now, sorry, let me find it. Um, it almost would seem to me like it would belong more in the basics of criminal justice. Is it, uh, wait, no, it's technical training, sorry, sorry. Introduction and overview. So you have models, you have the history of civilian oversight and development of CPRB in Urbana is D. Um, it would make sense to me to have something about, about the cultural awareness in that introduction and overview, but I'm open to suggestions from council.
The only reason that I, that I, that I would steer you elsewhere is because we already administered this orientation, and I, and, um, and we're hoping that you'll at least approve that as, as it is, because that's, that's what the orientation is that we put together and taped and have distributed. So it doesn't mean we can't do something, um, in the meantime, you know, in, in general, but in terms of locking it in as a, as a requirement, I wouldn't wanna, I wouldn't wanna go back and already have the orientation not be, um, complete. Do you know what I'm saying?
Yep, yep, yep. I, I hear you. Whatever, I just am curious what other people's thoughts are on where that should belong.
I would view those in, in technical training.
Okay.
Which one, Mary Alice?
Um, the, the two, uh, community and cultural awareness and bias-based policing slash racial profiling.
Yeah, I would, I would say technical.
A consensus on that?
Mm-hmm.
I guess I would agree too. Certainly they're gonna be very important, and I think it helps round out the, uh, vision in a direction that the community is really requesting. So it's, I think it's a really good addition.
Okay. Jared, you got a comment? Question?
Yeah, um, so Carol, uh, just, can you help me understand a little bit more about how the information described in these things are getting to CPRB members? Is it, like, session one is this YouTube video that you referenced to us, which I looked up and I've got up now?
The orientation standards for CPRB members, session one, two, and three are in that video.
Okay, so that, that video is one hour and sixteen minutes long.
Right.
And it says two to three hours of training in, uh, this orientation standards, approximates duration two to three hours.
Yeah, we estimated that, and, um, that was before we did the video. The, the one thing that is not in the orientation, but we're going to try to bridge the gap, um, with a, a written document, because it was a late ad, is under legal topics, the last, the last one, E, brief overview of relevant case law, that we're going to have, um, um, one of the attorneys is gonna put together a summary of the most germane cases, but then we added under technical training, um, a more complete review of that. I'm just trying to find.
Are you talking about the session seven, relevant case law in the technical training?
Oh, yeah, thanks. Thank you, yes. So that's one piece that's not in that, um, in that orientation video.
Oh, the relevant case law is not in that orientation video?
Right, the overview.
Okay, so I become a, a CPRB member, and the first thing that I do to become oriented to the CPRB and understand it is a one hour and sixteen minute video that I watch, and then I'm, and then I'm in.
Yeah, and the reason for that, uh, even though if you, if you dive in as a new member, and let's say you have, you know, let's say you have a very, um, thorny case on appeal or something, um, you won't be prepared. And I think, uh, the, the, the issue was, do you wanna have to put off, um, a, a new person gets, um, appointed, and then you have to, you have to schedule all this training before they can even be seated. So we're trying to strike a balance between what they need to know in terms of the basic processes and, um, and then, you know, giving time for them to get the, the technical training that they need.
Okay.
And, and you may not find that to be adequate, and in which case, that, you know, that's, that's for you all to decide, if you think someone can become a functional member of the CPRB, um, with just the orientation.
So I'm, I'm just asking that in the context of wanting council and city leadership and all of us to be thinking about what, what it is that we value about what the city does. You know, we're, we're, we talk about, you know, how much time this is gonna take, and that these are volunteer positions, and so on and so forth. And, you know, I have read through the ordinance, I've heard tons of the critiques about it, I've heard people who support the CPRB ordinance, and, uh, you know, I, I am hesitant about pouring time and effort into a system that may not really deliver, uh, the kinds of things that people are asking for from us when it comes to accountability and transparency with the, with the Urbana Police Department. I mean, ultimately, even if we get the CPRB to strictly adhere to the ordinance as it was written, uh, the CPRB has no legal authority, uh, over the, or Urbana Police Department, and can make the Urbana Police Department do nothing, uh, as far as I understand the way that that ordinance is written. There is no legal ramifications should the CPRB find that a complaint is justified, and, uh, you know, for example, discipline is warranted on an officer who, who did something that the CPRB finds that the complaint was justified, and it's a review of a denial of a complaint, you know, it's an appeals board. I'm not gonna get further into this, you under, you, you get what I'm saying. I, I, and I wanna bring some of this up as a topic for council to discuss, uh, next week, and like council next steps is, do we need to consider time and effort put on city staff, uh, in doing these things into what systems and which things are important? Because even if we approve these training things for this, which I think are, uh, we've got these, uh, these two things flipped here, the technical training that we have listed in those eight sections is almost a, uh, oh, you know, it clearly came out of that Nate, that Nate Hall, uh, list, but it's also almost everything that I did in the Citizens Police Training Academy, like step for step each, each week, uh, are those things. And the important parts of what is in, you know, for example, session one, B, civilian oversight of law enforcement, that's probably got, I haven't listened to this video, but it's probably talked about for what, maybe five, seven minutes in the orientation video? And then, and then it doesn't appear at all in the technical training afterwards. Everything that's in the technical training is about understanding how police function, which of course is important to reviewing what police do. But the, what we're talking about is civilian oversight and their role as civilian oversight. And I don't wanna belabor the point, I hope you understand what I'm, what I'm getting at. I hope council members understand what I'm getting at, that all this time that we can spend working on this, uh, and it may not end up giving us the thing that we want, because we're focusing on what's wrong with this one specific broken thing, instead of on what do we value as a city, you know? Is it more important for us to have real systems of accountability and invest in those things that don't rely on volunteer commissions and volunteer people and volunteer hours in order for them to be effective? If you wanna talk about real oversight of a police department, that's gonna involve real people, real money, and real investment. I mean, we're talking about people who literally work for a living doing those kinds of things. You know, just briefly on FOIA, you know, when we talk about how much staff time it takes, uh, to do FOIA, then it, you know, and it does, and I'm, you know, there's no doubt about it. But if the city valued transparency, then we would value a full-time FOIA person who that's all they do, and that's what they do. And we would give those things away. I'm, I'm not trying to get into arguments here, I'm just trying to illustrate to you guys that when we look at these problems, it, there is a ton of what's not happening is us discussing how we invest our resources into things that we find, uh, important, and how we turn something like the CPRB into a real form of accountability, into a real form of review process for police. Because it's an appeals board, and it doesn't do a whole lot, uh, because I, I don't wanna spend a ton of time on, on doing this, because I don't really think it's gonna get us to where, to where we need to go. And I will, of course, support any movement towards that and support, you know, whatever steps council is willing to take. But I just wanna lay that, uh, to the floor, uh, council members and to city staff when we're thinking about these kinds of things.
Did you want a response now, or do you wanna?
This is, this is just, no, I just wanna see this in your, in your, in your heads that we're, we're thinking about this of like, okay, well, let's fix this one little thing, rather than what can we holistically do in creating something more important that is actually gonna do the kinds of things people are being called on. I'm not looking for a response, I'm just trying to talk to you guys and let you guys know, you know, this is great that we're trying to do something with this, but it's, you know, a very small piece of a very, much bigger puzzle that we're trying to solve. And, you know, we should have vision to think beyond just, you know, okay, well, how do we get CPRB in compliance with an ordinance that isn't really doing anything that people are asking us to do? So that's, those are just my, my comments for council and for you guys.
Dennis, did you have comments on the training standards we're looking at here?
Right. Um, they're fine. Uh, I'd say, I'd say, certainly the orientation aspect of it, get that going first meeting, and let them meet and get started. If it, if it ratifies their presence as a commission, we need to do that exponentially. And then, as far as the other details about, you know, further training, you know, if the training is gonna be outside of the meetings, the regular meetings of the CPRV, that's gonna require volunteer interest and effort. But during the, during their meetings, they can also have discussions about how they themselves vision changing and, and maybe responding to some of the things that Jared's, is trying to express, and whether they themselves are seeking to expand the, the scope of service that they want to, to be involved in, and what that would require. And it could also be something then that we are, is brought to us, that conversation is brought to us to maybe make ordinance changes, expanding the scope of what the CPRB does. But the first thing to do is get them to meet and to be, start functioning as a commission.
That's the intent.
Any other comments or questions? I'm gonna, does anyone else wanna talk first?
Just a motion to extend the meeting.
Okay, you can make a motion to extend the meeting.
Because we're about to run out of time. I'll move that we extend the meeting. What do you think, till fifteen more minutes, twenty more minutes?
Thirty.
Okay, uh, till, till eleven o'clock. I'll second it.
Who seconded that?
Go ahead.
Bill Colbrook.
Mary Alice, okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes, so we're extended up till eleven o'clock. Um, did someone else have a question or comment? Mary Alice?
I actually was just gonna put a motion on the floor so we could continue discussion. That's all right with everybody.
That would be great.
Okay, I will move, uh, for approval of resolution number twenty, twenty zero seven zero three two R, resolution approving orientation, technical training, and continuing education standards for the civilian police review board members.
I'd like to second that.
Okay, further discussion.
I just, I.
Mary Alice.
I just wanna clarify, so what we've been talking about are the suggestions from Sharice to make the implicit training mandatory and then technical, um, and to, I suppose we could have language of strongly encourage members to participate in the, um, in the three-month training. Um, and are we making any other changes aside from the two that I asked you to put in the technical training, Carol?
The, um, the, uh, conflict, uh, uh, conflict training will become a conflict resolution training will become a technical requirement, and we'll add a refresher under the continuing education as optional. We have the anti-bias training require, uh, be a continuing education requirement, and then the two that you, um, offered, Mary Alice, uh, will be added to technical training.
Okay, thanks for clarifying.
Jared?
I wanted to, uh, bring up one topic, because I'm torn on the requirement for, uh, right-alongs, and I wanted to hear other council members' thoughts on that. Um, I did wanna, just from my own response, uh, to something someone had mentioned about, uh, during, during comments, I think it was, uh, Ben Jocelyn had said something about, uh, right-alongs being propaganda for the police. And I've only participated in one, so I can't speak to a multitude of that, but, uh, Ben, if you're still listening- you're still listening, I want you to specifically to know that I, when I was in my ride-along, I was very, very much trying to see if that was what was being presented to me, if I was being shown a biased version of what happens with, with our officers, if they were somehow trying to like put on a show for me or trying to, you know, maybe be on their best behavior. And I grilled the officer that I was with a lot when I, when I was there and I talked to them and I can tell you at least from my experience that it did not in any way, shape or form to me appear to be, you know, this propaganda tool for, for the police in my, you know, experience with them. I, I was honestly mostly ignored. They honestly mostly didn't act like I, like I was there, which is fine because I was just there to observe and, and see what was going on. But that was my experience. That being said, I don't know that I would say it is something that I felt was strongly enlightening enough to make it something that I feel like is a mandatory to be on anybody who reviews police conduct. I would say that it's highly, that it could be highly encouraged, that it should be suggested. And I do think that people should go on, on ride-alongs and experience what, what's, what's going on because at least in my experience, it was just being there next, next to the officer as they were responding to calls as they came in. There, there wasn't anything staged about it to me. It was just like, hey, you know, you're, you're just observing, you're just watching what's going on. So I think that could be beneficial. I don't know if I would consider it something that was beneficial enough to be mandatory. So I'm just interested to hear other council members' thoughts on that being a particularly mandatory thing that's in there. I know that Champagne does it and I know that that's probably where some of that inspiration came from, but I'm just curious on your guys' thoughts.
Even though you didn't ask for mine, I feel, I feel obliged to, I'm not going to say the identity of the CPRB member because I'm not speaking for him, but I do want to say that there is at least one CPRB member who I think feels very strongly about the benefit of, of ride-alongs and in our discussions about this expressed that.
Sure, and I'm not, that's why I'm asking for other opinions because that's my, that's just my opinion.
Dennis?
Yeah, I did, I did a ride-along sort of earlier in my service on city council. I found it interesting, it was a quiet night, but it was a night that preceded, had been preceded by some serious activities in the Lurman neighborhood, so that interested me. I was interested to see what, you know, how they cruised a neighborhood. And I observed a couple of traffic stops which I thought were dubious and that I thought sort of set my attention on whether traffic stops were being used for secondary purposes and not the original purpose of a moving violation. So these kinds of conversations we, I hope to have in the near future. I think Daryl Cruz has brought these things up to, for our enlightenment in a very serious way. But overall, I thought it was instructive and I think probably everybody ought to have experience of at least once.
Mary Alice?
Yeah, I, I'd have to agree with what Jared and Dennis said about, you know, just how the ride-alongs were conducted. I felt like I actually learned a bit about policing and, and the decisions that the cops make in terms of when they stop somebody and who they call. I happened to be on a traffic stop in which there were four cars called and the reason there were four cars called was because they were investigating marijuana, this is before marijuana was legal, and so they needed multiple responders on that call. And usually when I see a lot of police cars at a call, I'm like, if there's a whole bunch of them there, I'm thinking, why are there so many cops here, what's going on? And in this case, at least in this specific case, it was, there was certain reasons to have so many people there, even though it was such a minor infraction at the time. And there were other instances in which there were multiple people, multiple cars responding, but they would be waved off because they wouldn't be needed. I found it very important to try and understand how policing occurs. So from my perspective, I think that the ride-alongs are something that are worthwhile. I do understand that maybe not everybody would be comfortable with that. And so I'd like to suggest perhaps that an alternative could be, if somebody doesn't feel comfortable with that, viewing body camera video for certain different kinds of events, since we can use those for training. So I'll, I'll pose that suggestion.
Bill?
I think everybody in the council probably can predict where I'm going to land on this, on this subject matter, but I would think that ride-alongs would be incredibly valuable to CPRB members. Even if it's a four-hour shift, it could be a quiet shift, a quiet shift, you know, but during that quiet shift, you could get a proper dispute, you get a, you know, barking dog complaint. It's just interesting, you know, to see a police officer, you know, professionally do his or her duties, you know, interacting with the public, trying to, to referee a dispute amongst the residents of our city. And, and I think it's important for CPRB members to find out, you know, all the different types of calls that police officers go on. It's not, it's, you know, not every shift is, is, is an exciting shift, not everything, you know, is, is big, you know, there's, there's a lot of, you know, mundane things that happen, but you know, of course, from my perspective, if you cannot appreciate all the, the things that a police officer does in a shift, you're not going to get that in four hours, you know, sometimes it would, it may take an entire week. Now, that's the beauty of the field training program, you know, day one may be extremely boring, day one may be terrifying, you know, and just the more shifts that you work, you know, AKA the more shifts that you ride along, the more things you're going to see. But I think there's, there's no better way to see what the police officers in the police department are experiencing and, and the challenges that they have by simply doing it. You know, we could, we could take the same analogy with the fire department. We can sit here and talk about red fire trucks all day, but you don't really know what a firefighter, firefighter does until you work a 24-hour shift with them. There's, there's no better way to find out what a professional does until you embed yourself in the car with them.
Anyone else want to weigh in on this? Sharice and then Bill Brown?
Yeah, I just want to say before, there's some, I haven't done my ride-along yet, even though it was something I was supposed to do as the police citizens training, but I'm not, I'm not ruling out anything that I think would be educational to CPRB. I think that if it, however it helps them understand either side, one way or the other, I think it would, I think it would all be beneficial. So maybe not four hours worth, I don't know, that's a, that's a, they're what, 12-hour shifts or something? But if, if, if it can be put in with the training, if, if they have, if they can, I don't know that it should be required, but if there's, if, if it's something that can, that can help with the, with their knowledge of how, how, whatever may help them make decisions regarding what they make decisions on, I think, I think it would be a good idea for, I know, I don't rule any of that out.
Okay. Bill Brown?
Um, yeah, I, I'm in favor of it, I've, I've only done one, I was getting ready to ask to do another one before the COVID thing started, but I think it's real valuable just to see the interaction and, and I imagine most people that are on CPRB would want to do at least one a year. I think we're requiring two a year. I don't think that's unreasonable, but I also understand Mary Alice's point that maybe some people don't feel comfortable doing two a year and maybe there ought to be an alternative, but I, I would say in, in special cases, maybe you could have an alternative. I don't know how, how you fit that in the policy. I did want to mention just briefly the restorative justice. I don't see anything in the training because there's not really a restorative justice element currently, but I would encourage, I know that was a big, something that, that Eric was really interested to, interested in too. I would encourage that to be part of the CPRB sort of review of their own purpose, it'd be to incorporate some thoughts on how restorative justice could play into their role. So as we move forward with this sort of examination of their role, or their self-examination of their role, I'd, I'd be interested in seeing that addressed there.
Jared?
Carol, maybe you could have a discussion with the CPRB member who was adamant about that and ask about an alternative and for the time being. And also just to note that we're listing both the, if we make civilian police training academy a mandatory, you are supposed to do a ride-along, so you would, we'd be duplicating ride-alongs between that and other ride-alongs if we, if we made that one mandatory and they did the ride-alongs they're supposed to, then you would satisfy the requirement basically. But maybe you could ask that CPRB member about an appropriate alternative that they would approve of and we could just put a, or alternative approved training after that, after those words of the ride-alongs or alternative approved training.
Okay.
We can figure that out, what that, what that is.
I like that.
Okay. I don't know if we need to like make an amendment to the ordinance to do that or not. Seems like the document's relatively informal at, at, at this point in time.
Can incorporate these suggestions?
Yeah, I'll, I'll capture all of them.
Any other comments? Are you ready to vote? Bill, Brown?
Clarification, the way I understand it is that the police academy isn't required, it's still going to be optional, right?
Right, but I'm changing the wording to strongly recommend.
Okay, I mean, that's good. I'm, it, it is a big time commitment and I think it's only offered on one night, one particular night a week, Thursdays, I think it was at one timeout, I don't know maybe they've changed that, but some people just have regular conflicts too and it just doesn't work out.
We are ready to vote then on resolution 202007-032. It was moved by Mary Alice and seconded by Dennis. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Second action item is ordinance number 2020-07-037, which is a resolution, or an ordinance ratifying emergency order 2006, which is the temporary suspension of certain ordinances to allow for retail sales and services on sidewalks and parking lots. This is related to the COVID emergency declaration and phase four of the governor's Restore Illinois program. Basically, we had to suspend a number of ordinances relating to public right-of-way use, zoning ordinance, use of cities sidewalks for outdoor retail sales. So this was to accommodate retail operations who wanted to use mostly sidewalks at this point for selling merchandise. So our boutiques, our bookshops, shoe stores, something like that, if it was to accommodate or give retailers an option if customers didn't feel comfortable going inside a store, if they wanted to, to use public sidewalks to do so. So, so the emergency order was signed on June 30th to date. We don't have anyone who has applied yet to take advantage of this, but it's there for people, people to use. So if we can get a motion, then I can answer questions if you have any.
Right, I'll move that we adopt ordinance number 202007037 and ordinance ratifying emergency order 20-06, temporary suspension of certain ordinances to allow for retail sales and services on sidewalks and parking lots.
Second.
Seconded.
Seconded by Sharice. Any discussion? Okay. Sharice?
So this, this ordinance will allow people to, I, I just want to understand, have product on sidewalks and in parking lots as well or it's? Okay, so it's kind of like a, it can have a kind of a flea market feel?
Well, not, maybe not as free for all as that, it would be for individual retail establishments. If you think of a sidewalk sale day, you know, but it could be on a daily basis if they chose to do that. So they have to get a permit, they have to give the city a plan for what they want to do, how they're going to arrange equipment. We have to make sure that, you know, the sidewalk isn't blocked for handicap accessibility purposes and, and stuff like that, but mainly it's to give people, small businesses another option for, for selling. It's kind of like curbside delivery in a way of their product.
Okay.
Okay, I think we're ready to vote. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. I do want to call your attention and your packet was a memorandum from Scott Tess on the bid results from the municipal aggregation, bid process. And we do have a few minutes left before 11:00. Did you have any questions on the FOIA memo? If not, I can answer them in emails if you want. Jared?
Just because there's so much in that, I was really interested if we could do a presentation perhaps on some of the major issues that have come up with that at some point in the not-too-distant future from Kurt on some of those issues and have a general larger discussion because I could honestly go, go into it for, for an hour from now, but I'm just putting that out there that I think that it's worthwhile to put it up as a discussion item.
I think, just so I, just so I understand, based from what I've heard, major issues would be the charging of fees, what's the basis for redacting information from documents that have been requested? And again, just for the public information, we, we, for the first time in recent city memory, have had two individuals reach the threshold of being a recurrent requester. Most people are not charged, you know, if they're charged, it's very nominal, but a recurrent请求er has reached a threshold of 50 requests in a 12-month period or 15 requests in a 30-day period or seven requests in a seven-day period. And once that threshold is met, then that designation stays for a 12-month period. And as I said, two people have now reached that threshold, which is the first time in really anyone's memory here. So, so that, that was a real difference in what's happened in the past. But sure, we can, we can do a more detailed presentation.
Diane, I, I can send you more of the other, other things that maybe weren't mentioned that we'd like, that I know I personally would like to see in that.
Okay.
For warning on the questions I'd be asking.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
I just support, I support that request because I think it's really important for the public to understand the FOIA process, which was rather abstract even to myself until this rather clear document spells it out. So I don't know if we all agree with all the points, but everybody should at least understand how- understand how, how the city approaches it and why.
And the one thing that I would add to this, which we'll be happy to do in a presentation, is actually the staff members who do work on FOIAs. It's more than one full-time person, I can tell you that. It's, it's, well, we'll get the, we'll get the total. But there, there's a, there's a considerable amount of staff time devoted to FOIA, which is true in, in most cities, but it's important for folks to understand the resources invested in the FOIA process. So, yes, we can get a, we can get a presentation put together. And any questions you have that you want to address in that, that's not in this memo, please let us know so we can, we can cover that. All right.
Diane, what's your expectation on when we would see that?
I'd have to check with staff to see their time, you know, when we can pull that together. We've already pulled together a lot of the information, so it's, it's, I'll just have to need, I'll need to meet with staff on that.
Okay, we'll just give a heads up to council, when do you think we could see that?
Absolutely. There also is coming up a presentation on traffic stops. So that's another big topic that will be on the agenda in the coming, I would say, the next month, so. Two, two meaty topics there. All right, with no further business before this meeting, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.